Very consistent ang gino sa plan of salvation niya. Consistensya, wala sa'yo plan A, wala sa'yo plan B. When it comes to plan of salvation, wala sa'yo plan A, wala sa'yo plan B, plan C. Plan A, ginasya kanunay, og mo na siya na fulfill gayon. So that is the consistency of God. Okay. Now, katupi ng hahapit na ilan sang si Yes Christ? Katungapit na 'yung arresting officer mo about? Asa siya, di ba tuwa siya sa Garden of Good si Manny? Obdito nag-praise siya. Kita niyo sa Jan chapter 17, nag-praise siya. Obdito atong tungura, hahapit na siya magive up. Kaya tao ko siya atong tungura, di ba? Ang ka hard look, tanan, nagibati niya. So, when Jesus was nearly give up, o sa'yang ingon, 'yung prayers sa'yang father, ingon siya, "Father, if it is possible, remove this cup from me," cup of suffering, what it was about? "If it is possible, remove this cup from me." Pero sa'yo sugcon, "Yet not my will, but yours be done." So si Yes Christ very consistent, siyang commitment karikanato, napaka matyantaniya for the forgiveness of our sin. Kaya na siya ka consistent. God is very consistent of his word and promises, his plan, and his will. Now, is God's consistency, kung saba ang pagka-consistent siang gino, is God's consistency like loving, merciful, kind, good, faithful, understanding, and forgiving? Is God's consistencies toward us worth reciprocating for? Worth ba siya nga atong balusan? Kining pagka-consistent siang gino siyang pagka-loving, pagka-merciful, kind, good, forgiving, dapat ba natusi ang balusan? Morreciprocate ba mo, morreciprocate mo balos? Of course. Balusan natusi siya. Kung sa'yo may atong ibalos, oh alagaro natusi siya nga, matinod anon, dilitong pangalagan nga atras abanti, o pangalagan nga weather weather lang. Kondili, faithful manner, straight forward, mo nagisulti sa gino. Gani si Yes Christ nag-sulti sa Revelation 2:10, "Be faithful even to the point of death; I will give you the crown of life." So faithfulness is the issue. Ang issue is faithfulness. Sa tanan, dili lang siguro sa mga religious work, tanan, atong trabaho, dili sa municipyo, sa atong balay, it requires faithfulness. Og mo na makapahimoot sa gino. So we have to reciprocate. Basla nato ang gino. Kaya gugma man taniya, gugmaon atong balik ang gino. That, gani, kuman sa gino, gato siyang gugmaon, di ba? "Love the Lord your God with all your hearts, with all your soul, with all your mind, with all your..." Og ang maonggog ma i-apply nato sa uban, "Love your neighbor as yourself." Love your neighbor as yourself. Pangutana, kumusta mo si mong silingan? Okera mo? Basig, pila nakatuig ha, wag mo itingganay si mong silingan? Let us be consistent. Kita taniya nga, kita tas tong silingan nga, "Oh, sikig simba kadadiminggo ah, ah, mayay kayo ah." Pero wag mag-ikon niya aniinga, sorry kayo, nakasala ako, ay inconsistent taniya. So this is why siya religioso ta, simba na kadadiminggo, pero kontunay, conflict is sitel nato, mo na consistent. Kaya kung religious na kayo ta, mayay kita, pero sa tong silingan nag-aaway, wag nato ma-sitel, inconsistent na siya. It means, himoon nato ang atong gisulti, o sa'yo atong gisulti, atong buhaton. Okay. So, kung sa'yo mayayong prayer nato, sa tong kagalingon nani? Siguro ang ato ang prayer, "Mokini Lord, help me or help us establish the virtue of being consistent." Sa tanan, mura suntok man na sa buwan pastor? Talapag i-keep consistent, tawag na guta, sige tagka mali? Di ba suntok sa buwan? Adi man? For example, sige man tagka, sige man tagka balintong tungo sa mga, sa mga weakness nato. Sa weakness, hinu nato, mura consistent ta. Sige nato kabalintong, kabalintong, kabalintong. Okay, pero bangon po, consistent po si mo pagbangon. Every time nga ma stumble ka, bangon. Stumble na po, bangon, always bangon, ya. By the grace of God. So dili, good nato ni mahimo, konti na mga ayoko, gracias gino. Kaya kung mahimo, magod po nato, sa ato ang kagalingon, ang labas humbug na po ta. Pero nahim on nato tungo sa gracias gino, wala kay pasalamat, wala kay panghambog, kondili, i-glorify ni mo ang gino. Okay? Hinaut nga ang atong prayers atong kagalingon, "Lord, help me establish this kind of virtue, the virtue of being consistent." Consistent ako sa akong ministry, consistent ako sa kong trabaho, as employee, govern employee, consistent ako gino. Tanan, consistent ako sa mga tao, akong ipramisan, akong mahimo, consistent ako sa pulo nga akong iwalay, o sa akong ihi mo, consistent ko. Kaya mo na, by the grace of God. Okay, hinaut nga. We learn something this morning. Let's pray. Thank you, O God, for the lesson we have learned this morning. Thank you for being consistent to each one of us. Despite, Lord, of our weaknesses, shortcomings, we know that, O God, how inconsistent we are. But, Lord, we thank you because you are always consistent to each one of us. You are always loving, merciful, always good, understanding, and above all, forgiving. Help us, Lord, to establish this kind of virtue upon our lives. Make us very consistent, O Lord, in everything. Thank you, O God. And now, O Lord, we thank you for the privilege this morning that we could gather together. We pray that your people, the legislators, as they are going to do their session today, it is our prayer that your divine wisdom will govern each one of them, to guide them, O God, for the progress, or continuous progress, of the municipality of Biffel. Continue to bless us, the LGO family, and all of the Piliños, O God. Protect us, Lord, and always keep us with your divine protection and your abundant provisions. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen and amen. Good mornings sa tanan. Okay, hello. Ah, alang sa tanan, no, sa mga SB staff, o ang mga ah SB mismo, since nga nausap ang time. Ah dati is 10 o'clock ang session, so 9:30 to 10:00 mo ang MRP time. So parang kay nausap man siya, 9:00 naman ang kuwan ang session, so 8:30 to 9:00 mo ang ah MRP time. So atong iawag, no, talayang mga SB members, uban sila mga staff nga, niya na sila dili sa 8:30 para sa tuang MRP. O siguro sa mga visitors po, may inform sila bayan nani. Kala lang, lagang salamat. Pleasant good morning to each member of this August body, especially to our visitors that we have this morning. I think they're all, they are all members of the Moral Recovery Program, MRP, of the Municipality of Biffel. And also, I think we also have Ustads from the Islam faith who are here with us this morning also. And to our staff, to the other members of the San Bueneng Bayan, good morning. Welcome to this second regular session of the San Bueneng Bayan of Biffel. And I would like to request everyone to please stand as we welcome the entrance of the maze, the Presiding Officer, and the Secretary of the San Bueneng Bayan, Madam Estelita Igia.
Hello, hello. Hello, good morning to each and everyone. The Chair would like to call order, or please given. Hello. Good morning each and everyone. The Chair would like to call the order, our second regular session. Since we have MRP this morning, I would like to please remain stand for their national anthem.
Mga atang bayan, ang pans.
Um, hello, Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Okay, good morning to each and everyone. Welcome to the second regular session of the 13th Legislative Council of the Municipality of Biffel. Uh, Mr. Chair, present for today's regular session, we have, uh, we have the Honorable Anamel Oligario, the Municipal Vice Mayor. We have Glenn Ayans Abihon, Honorable Sharif Mazin Hasim, Honorable Dayan Catalunya, Honorable Eric Alibutdan, Honorable Janelle Boardner Andalahau, Honorable Elias Dangpalan, Honorable Joel Eball, Honorable Alberto Alcoriza Jr., Honorable Treximil Palalon, Honorable Roy Andy Oligario, Honorable Al-Hafid Muhammad. On record, sir, there are 11 out of 12 we are in courtroom.
Since majority of this August body is present, the Chair would like to declare there's a call. Floor leader, for the adoption of business for today. Floor leader, for the adoption of business for today.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to request one member of this August body to pass a resolution approving the, our reference of business for today's session.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I move to, to approve the order of business for today.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Alibutdan. Any second to that motion? Seconded by Honorable Hasim, any discussion? Any amendments, objection, there being none, motion approved? Um, floor leader, uh, the Chair would like to know who are the visitors for today? Visitors for today?
Yes, uh, we are on the visitors hour, uh, Mr. Chair. And I think we'd like to acknowledge first our, uh, MRP focal person from the mayor's office in the person of Pastor James Peter Mayo, representing the whole team of the MRP. Uh, Pastor James?
Sir, good morning, we are now acknowledged.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, I move to suspend the roll.
Roll suspended.
Good morning to everyone once again. The Moral Recovery Program here in LGU has been started in the last term of former Mayor Eldwin Alibutdan. And in the first term of Mayor Anamel Seoligario, uh, MRP went through a legis, in a legislation, and it became an ordinance in the year 2016 up to now. And, uh, in this new administration, we have our new members of, uh, MRP. Maybe, uh, from 33 members, now it became 23 pastors. Okay, so Moral Recovery Program, all its members are assigned to different departments of here in LGU. All departments of LGU has an assigned MRP pastor. Besides, uh, there is also in a, uh, MRP, or MRP pastor being assigned to the barangay during barangay session, 30 minutes also before the session. And some of them also were assigned to the FTS, those who are parents recipient of the four piece. Okay? And as you notice, no, in the mayor's staff, uh, we are not in equal, equal of what we call love give or salary because, uh, some are newly, you know, uh, they are just, uh, joined last year or two years ago. And also, it depends upon the assignment that was given to them. Some have two departments, they are holding two departments, some are holding three to four departments. Okay, so that is why we are not equal with comes to honorarium. Okay, and also, uh, one thing that MRP has given a task is to assist the mayor in solemnizing civil weddings. So those are the works of the, uh, MRP pastors. That's all determining.
Floor leader, the Chair would like to know, uh, any comment from the body, or the query from the body?
Um, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Dangpalat, we are now recognized.
To the pastor to introduce, or those assigned in different barangay?
Can you repeat the question? Repeat ang question.
Uh, i-introduce lang sa atin 'yung mga, uh, pastors na assign for ensala at lahat ng mga barangay na nagkakonan ng MRP.
Okay, sir, uh, okay, di introduce. Last na request of Honorable Dangpalat.
Thank you, sir. Uh, merong naassign sa, I think, sa tumitom, bakalan, pangi, upper and lower pangi, uh, almost, sir, almost, barangays, merong MRP na naka-assigned. Pero ngayon, to start this kuwan, this, uh, this year, siguro, konti na lang ang, may mga pastors kasi nabawasan 'yung mga MRP pastors. Pero, uh, we don't know, kaya merong mga pastors na willing sila mag-volunteer, mag-volunteer sila na ma-assigned sa mga barangays. So sa, sa ngayon, sir, parang konti na lang ang ma-assigned sa barangay kasi napawasan din ang lineup ng MRP.
Any more question? Yes, Honorable Alibutdan, you are now recognized.
Pwede nato, ang, pwede nato mailhan lang ka ng mga members sa MRP pastors, naku, ah, naakarong dalawa pastors?
Yes, sir.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so, pwede siguro no, atong patindogon ang kuwan atong mga MRP pastors nga niya din he?
Um, kuwan na lang, pas, um, i-call na lang ba yine, ilang kuwan dayon? Kumusta na lang sila pa'y kuwan, para mailhan po nilang uban?
Oh, sige. Uh, first si Pastor Jansing Tan, and then si Pastor Jason Centurias, eh, Pastor Subiyati, Pastor Sumilhig, Pastor Sabihon, Pastor Inolpi, Pastor Jan Andrew Bayotas, Pastor Payud, okay, Pastor Tugot, Pastor Magna, Pastor Manchinero, uh, Pastor Borgiti, Pastor Hilar, Pastor Juwi, Delapinya, and Pastor Yusiel Boris. Omo, di sila ang uban siguro sir, wala pa kayo na out of town ang uban sila.
Thank you, sir, um, you may sit. Yes, Honorable Alibutdan.
Isa sa tong uban, request pwede ba daw magpa-pictures together with the pastors?
Okay, let's go. This is for two minutes for the Victoria.
Okay. Yes, sir. That's why we want to know. O paunsa ang ato ang paghimog sa bisyo ng atos mga kabarangayan? That's, one sir, kining, every session, dun nagin may attendance, wag nao, attendance gina, gina-report amon, and this is sir, sa kuwan, in charge kita naon, o kining mga pastors always bagay na nagkuhan, na nag-add to dito siyang assignment. So ginakuhaan, ginamon, muna ginamunitornamo kanunay, na nabasai, nabasai attendance, it means consistent pagigbo siya ga-report siyang assignment. Okay, so meaning, our pastors are also attending barangay session? Yes, sir. Ah, okay. So more or less, two times a month? Insofar as barangay session is concerned? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any more question?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, so, Mr. Floor Leader, you may have the floor now.
I think I was part of this ang buong bayan during the time that this MRP was institutionalized in 2016, no pastor? If I may, maybe right? Okay, I know that the presence of our pastors from the different evangelical churches in the MRP, first of all, the monetary consideration is not their first priority. Because these pastors, they have their different churches, they belong to the different churches, they have members of their churches, na nagsweldo nila, naghatag nila ukwarta. This is an additional ministry for the pastors to help the municipality of Epeel in the Moral Recovery Program. So I do believe that they are very much satisfied with what they are receiving right now. Pangkasulinan na nila. Buhi naman si LaGod sa ilang mga simbahandaan. In fact, in our last meeting with our municipal administrator, when Pastor James presented the complete list of the pastors who will be involved in the Moral Recovery Program for the LGU Epeel for this year and onwards, the only question coming from the office of the municipal administrator was, "Are they still willing to serve?" Unia, ingon sia, okay, we just want to be assured, nga kining mga pastor mo padayon paghapon sa pagserbisyo na'to, gusto lang na'to makita sila. So that is why it came to a point that we decided to invite you here. In fact, that includes the Ustads of the Muslim faith to also come to this session this morning to show the same interest. Because the Moral Recovery Program is not only for the local government unit of Epeel, but also for, I mean, in this building, but also in the barangays. Muadto sila sa mga kabarangayan, even some government officers, no pastor? National agencies, even the Philippine National Police. And the schools. So this Moral Recovery Program, in fact, for me, Mr. Chairman, I do believe that this must continue. In fact, if given the go signal or the authority by this ang buong yan, I would like to pass a resolution approving the current setup of the Moral Recovery Program for the Municipality of Epeel. Para makatrabaho na sila. Mo oni ang katuyuan sa atong municipal administrator, nga nung kita'wag mo. This is not to, kuwan, this is just to get your commitment, and then after we get the commitment of the pastors and even the ustads, then we can go on with our mission. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Alcoriza. Any more question from the body?
Finally, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Honorable Able, you are now recognized.
May we request our pastors and even our ustads who are here this morning, Mr. Chair, based on our experiences, manggood before. Amo tanghangyo, sa ato mga pastors, we are working for this. Labi na, ang atong gina-promote ang mayong pagtulunan. Nguntak, dili, nguntak ni sila may involve o maupil appeals sa politika. Because these were our observations before. Na maupil mapod sa panahon sa kampanya. No, ang amo ang tanghangyo, na they should remain as what their functions are. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Able.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Alcoriza, you are now recognized.
I completely agree with Honorable Joel Able. In fact, if we go back again to that meeting the other day with the municipal administrator, the former vice governor, Ray Oligario, he just want to get the commitment of all the pastors that they will not participate in any political activity in the Municipality of Epeel in the coming years. That is why in the previous list of thirty-three pastors, Pastor James was able to trim it down to only twenty-three pastor, twenty-three, no? Because it was proven that some of them were greatly involved in politics. Now, this is the new list. And again, I'd like to reiterate what Honorable Able had said. Please pastors and even ustads, promote your faith to the people. Let us recover the morality of our people, including us, and forget about politics. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Alcoriza. Any more question, query? Sir, thank you. Hi, okay.
Okay, I want to say something also, and I agree with Honorable Able. And I'd like to say also that isa sa mga matter na among ginadisikasan among ourselves pastors, MRP pastors, about ano. Tongod manggod kay, we came from different illuminations. Og deny the illumination, sir, nga, ukira sila ha? Na pataag kitag support sa nga na. Samua sa kuwan sa kamakop, kuwan na siya ka ng clear cut gina siya nga, no? Kung mukuan ka na, your risk automatica, automatica resigns if ang church gumuapil ka. Okay, so tongod kay, dili may pries ang mga concept na mga tawag na policy, ang uban ukira, no uban gudili pwidi. So isa na siya sa nagahatao trouble sa muwa. Og tarong nga ni Ani, ko dekita niyo, nga ko dekita niyo. So pagpresenta mo sa kuwan, pagpresenta mo sa mong lineup, so ang mga staff nga nag-scrutinize, agi specifica kini din ipili kay mo. Kung temehim mo, sumali na itabo. And I agree, sir. Just, ka na ng tawag na neutral, moan magi, suposili nga na mangyod. Prosahe kining mga, muna temptation sa muwa, among as pastor. So thank you, sir. I really agree of your suggestion.
Any more question, query? Sir, thank you. And behalf of San Jose Bayan, I'd like to thank all the pastors, sa ilang commitment, sacrificio. Dili, lalim, ang mahimong pastors sa tinuod lang, ako, isa ko, Ka-Ornega Christian, akong lola, nahimong pastora. So nakita na ko every day ang sacrificio sa isa ka pastor, so in behalf, sa San Jose Bayan, tagang salamat sa inyong pag-sacrificio. Thank you, sir, and God bless you.
Thank you, pastor. Again, a reminder that clearly, our constitution says that there is a separation between the state and the church. Can I repeat? Concentrate with your faith, and we will also, can I concentrate on what we are doing as public officials? Can I lang? All we need is your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, visitor, Mr. Floor.
Ah, okay, Mr. Chair, considering that we have already done with the pastors, I'd like to immediately move to the next group of the ustads. I'd like to call on Ustad Sarabi Kamsayin, the UCI Ulama Council of Epeel based in Sanito. I'd like to recognize sa ustads Kamsayin.
Okay, sir, good morning, you may have the floor now.
Good morning. You are now recognized.
Good morning, everybody. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. In behalf of the Ulama Council of Epeel, we are partnership with the MRP. Since the admin of Attorney Andre Oligario, three term, after that, followed by Attorney Eldwin Alibutnan, and the last term of the Mayor Ami Oligario, till now. We have a member forty asatids, the plural of the ustads, asatids. Assigning in different barangay, fifteen barangay here in Epeel. Our rules to teach the children, our learners, about the Arabic language and Islamic values. We know the rules, our constitution, separate the church and the religion, but we know under the mandates of the Deputy Memo Forty-Six, Series Two Thousand Eight, all the governors, mayors, and the barangay level to assist the madrasa education, teaching a good conduct and values, especially in our community, specific here in Epeel. We have a different teaching strategies from the barangay. We have a curriculum which we teach in our children or the pupils. But as a information, the madrasa education program, three kinds. We have the private madrasa, but not implemented until now in Epeel. And the two is the traditional madrasa, which is more teaching Saturday and Sunday, that is a traditional madrasa. And the public madrasa, which is teaching the ustads in the school from Monday to Friday. So yon po ang aming mga grupo na mga ustads, ang nakapasok lamang. Ang traditional madrasa, Saturday and Sunday, at saka public madrasa, na tuturo sa mga kabataan, sa magandang aral, at mga values. Sa panahon ni Mayor Andre Oligario, traditional madrasa, akomodit lahat, pero konti lang kami nun. Then followed by Attorney Alibutnan, hindi na nakapasok ang traditional madrasa, ang akomodit niyan 'yung public madrasa. Pero hindi ko konti dahil ang paaral lang lamang, ang napasok sa bangkiruhan, kaparan, magdaop, at saka satinan. Yon lang. Sa panahon ni Mayor Ami Oligario, nakapasok ang traditional madrasa at saka itong public madrasa. Sa ngayon, meron kaming forty. Ah, meron pa, papasok until now, hindi pa medyo na ano, naplastar kung sino naman ang nakaalis at sino namang ang bagong pumasok. Sa maganda, sana ito sa akin lang lamang, na dapat depende sa inyong pamumuno, sa bagong administration ito, sa pamalakan, sa mabuting pamaraan. Kasi yung tinitingnan namin, 'yung mga future na mga kabataan, maturuan sila na magandang asal, na hindi sila maturuan ang mga ano-ano, katulad ng mga akap na terrorism and the other criminals which has involved in our laws in Islam. Na baka mapagbintangan na kung ano-ano ni na ituro dito sa madrasa, kaya mas maganda na. Kami ay hingi sa inyo ha, sa kunjiho neto, sa patulungan kami, kami mga asatids dito sa Epeel na makontinyo kasama sa kasamahan namin mga MRP. Yon lang po, maraming salamat.
Thank you, sir. Any query from the body or? Yes, Honorable Palat, you are now recognized.
Yeah, good morning. Ustads, I think yung itong mga private madrasa, pa'ki explain nito, ano private madrasa na'to?
Itong private madrasa, hindi pa ito nakapasok, sa ngayon, katulad ng doon sa Magdaop Asian Institute, hindi pa'y nakapasok. Ang nakapasok sa atin 'yung traditional madrasa, 'yung natuturo every Saturday and Sunday. Kasi 'yung mga bata na pakatapos mag-aral, saan-saan sila pumupunta, minabuti na lang na makapag-aral sila ng Islamic values doon sa madrasa, kasi weaken na nila. Kaya maraming nakapasok doon, kanya-kanya sila, nagawa na kanila mga madrasa at nagkuha sila mga enrolers nila, mga learners nila. Ang pangalawa itong tradition, itong public madrasa na nakapagturo sa paaralan. Yon talaga kung, kung mga ano, siya ang gamot, roots ng edukasyon dahil ang ating edukasyon ay mandato sa ang ating edukasyon ay mandato sa Deped. Yung nabanggit ko kanin yang Deped memo na dapat matulungan talaga. Kasi yung mga ustads na ito, halos volunteer po ito. Ang nagsusweldo sa kanila, yung PTE. Bisa na mga PTE, yung mga peers nila, mapigilan na hindi na mag-aral dahil wala na may bigyan na contribution. Kahit 10 pesos lang, hindi talaga yun makapal, makapagbigay kaya ang yung iba, hindi na nakapag-aral. Kaya naghihihikamin ng tulong na kahit honorarium lamang, yun, naapprove yun, dito sa kunsiho ni's 2,000 pesos monthly honorarium. At sana managdangan pa ito. Kaya mapila kami sa inyo, ang kami ay nagtuturo sa mga kabataan natin para maging mabuti silang ah, mga bata.
Ustads, as of now, ilan pa, ilan na ba kayo na nagtuturo dito sa itong sa madrasa? Traditional, private, and public?
Hindi pa po ito na ano, kasi ongoing pa po niyang paglisting nila. Kasi meron ina-list, yung hindi na nagtuturo, meron naming, namang ano, new ah, member namin na nagapply. Pero maganda sana titingnan na ang qualification ng itong mga asatis na ito.
Okay, so ah, I think ah, ustads, you identify those ah, ustads, kung sino talaga yung mga ah, dapat or mga qualified na magturo or even na magbigyan ng accounting honorarium.
Oo.
So para hindi naman ah, lahat, kasi kung tutuusin mo, sa ustads, andami yan. Marami yan, nakikita ko rin yan na mga, dito sa atin no? Sa Muslim co-unities, andami yun ustads.
Yes.
And I would like also to mention na yung mga ah, iano niyo rin kung ilan na yung mga estudyante niyo. Eh, ikwan niyo na ba? Para isadmit niyo rin dito sa, sang, sang natin isadmit, sa mayor's office? Or dito sa Jose Bayan? Para ma-identify talaga kung sino talaga yung mga qualified na mag ah, mga ustads magturo. Kasi yun doon, ay, nakikita ko man din sa atin, barangay, Bangkiruhan, especially doon sa tabi ng bahay.
Oo.
Sa Bangkiruhan, ang nakikita ko na lang na nagtuturo doon is ah, dalawa. Dalawa? Ah, every Saturday and Sunday, dalawa na lang ang nagtuturo doon. So sana ipagpatuloy natin, alam ko doon sa kabila dahil dami natin mga
Oo.
madrasa school dyan. Then ah, I think mas maganda siguro kung i-identify natin kung madrasa yan. Then kung sino-sino yung mga nagtuturo, to include ah, Sinan, Kaparan.
Kapadas.
Taway.
Tinan, tinan, taway.
Taway.
Sabor na, Buluan.
Oh yes. So please identify kung sino man yung na assign sa inyo as, anong patawag dyan? As a leader or your supervisor na mga ustads? Para ma-identify po natin.
Dati akong nag-supervise niyan, tinitingnan ko kung sino nagturo at saka hindi. Sa ngayon, wala na po ako. Iba na po ang pinahandle ni Mayor Ngayon Rambo, si Ajay Mujakarin. So pwede siya na lang ang ah, magsisadmit kung sino ang yung active na nagtuturo at saka yung hindi na.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, before I acknowledge honorable, I would like to acknowledge first honorable si Renorable Abel.
Renor. Thank you, Mr. Chair, good morning. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Um, ustads, I would like to ask um, kung every... Renor.
Yan, meron.
Meron. Diba sa?
Ah.
Oo. Um, naman ay mga grade zero to grades six.
Kinder.
So, ah, kinder.
Hmm.
No, ah, from grade zero, diba?
Oo.
Kinder to grade six.
Grade six.
So, hangtutasa na ang kada...
Hangt sa college? Ah, college. Meron ta yung college bago ngayon dito sa Sinan, ah, mahad sa Ibnu Usaimin, under sa kapitan, Inspector Ali. Narini ko meron silang ah, open dyan na bago for the college student. And there is, is the elementary or ibtidae, kasama ng mga kinder doon.
So, 'yung ano na lang si ustads no, um, tamatoo ang kay ah, SBA dampalan, kung unsa man ang among matabang.
Hmm.
So, that's why, same sa mga pastor, masning Christian kay kani, kinahangal na ni nato um, tagaan po't pagtagad, no? Kay sa atong ah, kwan, mura, mura po niyang atong mabaon sa ah, pikas nga atong ah, kabuhay, no? Haha, so, siya'ol na ustads, ini um, ipakuha na lang to kung unsa yung mga among matabang, no? From any barangay, hindi sa, hindi sa Ipil.
Hmm.
Ah, para imaforward po nato, matabang, tabang, tabanganin nato.
Oo.
Kay maupampod niyang programa ni former Vice Governor Katong Kalitam, sakto'toy mo ah, no? So, inshallah, ah, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, honorable Abel, you may have the floor now, thank you, Honorable Masin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. So, ustads ah, Kamsayin. Ah, Mr. Chairman, I just want to be clarified. If this ah, ah, being mentioned by the speaker, a government ah, what is this, government school?
Government madrasa.
Madrasa? Is this connected with the affiliated with the Deped?
Yes.
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 Government.
Government.
Okay, are they receiving salary with the Deped teachers?
Honorarium.
Honorarium, not, not salary?
Yes, but not all, specific only based on the request of the ah, principal, like example in Bangkiruhan, requesting ah, from the office of the mayor, ah, the city assistant, inspection agad ni Mayor Rambo, nakita na doon, ang dami na mga bata, 330. So lack of chairs, binigyan ng plastic chair, walang blackboard, pinadala na ng blackboard. Ah, walang pintura nyong madrasa kasi yung madrasa namin doon, kami lang po nagawa. Hindi po gawa ng Department of Education ng madrasa, kasi separated po yun. Pero under the supervision of the Deped, parang non-formal education ba.
Okay, so as we hear, Mr. Chair, these are, shall we say, ah, they belong to the meragula kay na tagaan o pagtagad sa ato ang gobyerno.
Yes.
And so, ah, Mr. Chairman, me, I suggest perhaps to the committee concerned to pass a legislation to this effect so that at least we could possibly extend help to the IP's indigenous people. And I'm very thankful for the previous ah, executives up to the present. Nagtagaan sila pagtagad, but let us, ito duto doon na nato niyong ta, pagpabot ng serbisyo sa ilaha. As I understand, we are giving them 2,000 pesos?
Yes.
Per month? So, siguro, ah, let us refer this to the committee concerned and study about this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, honorable Abel. Ah, anyone from the body?
Honorable Chair.
Yes, honorable Lapid, yun na recognized.
Good morning, it's to everyone. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. So, daghang salamat kayo no sa atong mga pastor, atong mga ustad nga, wala gusil lagi kapui, magpahidumdom sa atwa apilta. Kay kani sila ang ilang mga pinulungan, pinulungan kunis sa Biblia o Quran. So meaning, di lang mga kabataan, hantu't kita apilta. So siguro, as my part, 100% mag-support kita sa ilaha kung sa atong matabang. Can I, Mr. Chair, daghang salamat.
Okay, thank you, honorable Lapid. Anymore? I think, Sir, thank you, um, salamat. In behalf of San Jose Bayan, thank you sa pag-sacrifisyo po din niyo sa kwan. Rest assured, na kung unsa man among matabang, ma-legislate sa inyo ha, kami amdam'y matabang sa inyo ha. Thank you sir and maybe...
Maraming salamat, wassalam.
Okay, thank you. And can you move um, um, for the referral to the paper committee, please?
Ah, Mr. Chair, um, hearing the statement of Ustad Sarabi, ah, this representation would like to ah, refer this ah, matter to the Committee on Education. I think as well as the Committee on ah, the indigenous peoples, ah, Mr. Chair.
This matter will be referred in Committee on Education and ah, may be. Next visitor, Mr. Flor.
Honorable Chair, pwede ba nato silang ma-kuyog sa papipicture board para makita na to sila?
Puto o siguro sa mga taga, mga ustad?
Please just for two minutes, for putos.
Okay, si.
Okay, back order. Sir, thank you.
Mr. Flor, ah...
Next visitor, Mr. Flor.
Ah, at this point in time, I think the pastors are ah, going out already. So thank you, sa inyong pagtambung.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chair, ah, our next visitor is the branch head of ah, United Coconut Planters Bank, UCPB Savings Bank Kabasalan Branch, ah, Mr. Ronelo B. Tala.
Okay, sir, Ronel, you may have the floor now, good morning.
Um, sa taawar, honorable counselor, ah, newly elected and re-elected, ah, Mayu Buntag, ah, dahil kayong salamat sa oras of ah, chance na makahistoria din eh. Um, by the way, I'm Mr. Ronelo B. Tala. Um, I'm the branch head of the United Coconut Planters Bank. Um, kajut lang niya kuha, gamay lang niya insert. Um, last week, ah, nagkurtusiko kang honorable Mayor Rambo. And then ako ang gi, ah, gi-pasensiyahan, kung sa mo ang purpose. And then he agreed, ah, gitugtan miniya, munang naamidre ka rin para mag ah, present. O, ah, ah, explain na mo ang, ang purpose ng unang naamidre. Ang pinakauna na, ang purpose, main purpose na amidre is ah, to request the honorable council to pass a resolution ah, to ah, tugutan ang atong honorable mayor to sign a memorandum of agreement between UCPB Savings Bank and the LGO Ipil. Um, through salary loans to all regular employees and permanent employees, including um, ah, mga elected officials.
Okay. Um, thank you. Um, any question from the body, questions from the body, please? Floor leader?
Ah, okay, so ah, ah, anyone from the members of this august body who would want to avail of the loan? You are given a copy of their ah, ah, loan range as well as the bracket?
Flyers.
Flyers?
Yes.
Ah, my question to manager, nakasadmit nakadiri ug mga kwan, ang proposed memorandum of agreement? Na ano?
Um, wala pa, kay ang sa, ang mga mga process is kinala na mo ang resolution daan bago na mo sa ma-hatagan o kwan, approval daan sa resolution bago may makahatag o kining memorandum of agreement.
Okay, but sir, um, our protocol here is, um, before pagmaw, um, endorse, um, endorse pa ni mayor, the, um, ato sa mayor, then endorse ang amidre, manamang protocol ka sa garaan.
Okay, um, sige sir, ah, ato ano, sundun sir. Kay ang, ang, I'm sorry, um, ang, ang magung nabuhat dito sa, sa LGO Naga in Kabasalan is inana siya na pumaagi. So, ah, ah, akala, ah, binako ang inana po dito.
Oh, it should always be the mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you. Ah, manager, ah, Tala?
Um, pag humala lang sir, ah, maliki na lami. Rest assured na, nararami pinintindi dito.
Thank you, daghang salamat.
Thank you. Floor leader, next visitor, please.
Next, ah, visitor is ah, from upper pangi, ah, Mr. Ariel Higayon.
Before I acknowledge, ah, Mr. Ariel, I would like to, the chair would like to call recess for two minutes. Some technical problems.
Way signal? Naada sila, uh, barangay... Lagi-lagi. Ah, revenue ko, doon na na diri, nakakalindar. Ikuwan na siya, i-refer na karoon sa committee sa... Okay. Ah, okay, 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 thank you.
Sige. Wala eh, ma'am. Ela siya, refer na lang sa committee. Wala na, iyan ikuwan, balik na po daw sa tuwag. Naku, yung, uh, saman, kung may beses, or manawag na lang, re-legalize na lang ako. Okay, na kuwan na po, review na po dito sa kuwan, sa budget. Okay na, or re-legalize na lang ako, Chair. Okay, saman. Siyo duwal na ko, du, wala, duw na siya, pagdiri, pagdiri na siya. Manan kuwan na. Kada siya dyan. Kasi na dyan. Nakadindam ka, nakadindam ka, wala. Hello, um, requesting the body to visit, be seated. Mura, nakon ako pa dito trabaho, okay na. Back order, floor leader, for our visitor.
Okay.
For the next visitor.
Next in the visitors, uh, Mr. Chair, is, uh, again, I'd like to call on Mr. Ariel Higayon of, uh, Upper Pangi. I think, uh, his purpose in coming to the Sanggoyan Bayan Session for today is to make a follow-up, uh, re regarding the subdivision of, uh, Upper Pangi, Immanuel, Immanuel subdivision?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Ariel?
Sir, good morning, you know recognize?
Yes, Mr.
Uh, yes, uh, before, uh, we recognize, uh, uh, Mr. Higayon, Mr. Flor, I move for the suspension, suspension of the rules to accommodate our visitor.
No suspended.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, may, uh, may bundag sa tanan, ug sa nakakarondiri sa mga konsihal. Uh, follow-up lang na mo katong dito sa amo ang area nga. Actually, gi, visit na ni former konsihal Katetural Bayan, Sir, uh, Serpin Ramos. So, wala ku, ingon sila, dilid dud, sila ka-decision pa daw ato kay murag. And namampod sa ilahang kuwan, dayon, ang amua lang aniunta nga. Did N manggutuan mu, so katong gi-ingon nila ng adalan, ako ang balay ang did N. So, by the next lot, lae napod ang tag iya sa Yuta. Ang gihimu sa tag iya sa sunod manggod, gusto nila isumpay ang dalan sa Top Mars. So ang amua, for siguridad na lang sa mo, for safety lang po na mo, unang amua is sarado ang amuang did N. Kay, sa Top Mars, mantu siya. Mahoy ilang ingon is donated sa LGU, yes, donated siya sa LGU. So, ang mahitabuo ani siguro kung, delete kay ko ka balus, ang mga ingon animo, pero, ako ang nakuwan na nga, gi-donate siya tungut kay, para unsay mga, uh, road maintenance, ang LGU memo kuwan. Pero siguro, dito rapod taman sa asa, dapit ang did N kay, ang nahitabuo sa sunod nga lutimang god, nagbaligya ang tag iya. Gusto nila sumpayan amuhang dalan kay, wala sila idalan ilaha. So, delete man siguro po pwedeng nga, magbaligya ka, unya wala kay dalan. Imuha, so ang tag iya gin sa Yuta, mo'y mo-provide ug dalan. Delete kay, mahassul me, kasi kami, namuyung minga malinaw diri sa amuang area. Then isa pa, kun nga nung amo gin gi-force nga, ma-close dud ang did N. One time di, agibato ako ang balay, kaduhan na, sa isa kagabi ika-duha. Wala lang dud, dud siya na ko napablatte kay, kanila laging busy putas sa, ginagmay natung kuwan, pamaligyaan ng bulak na ko, unang, sa kabi inami mauli, karoon, wala dud, na ko gipuyan na kung balay tungut kay murag. Delete na mi safety kay, naaamong guyimusulud gawas, kasi ang sa sunod nga lut, lutin nga, sa Yuta nga gi kuwan, gi baligya nila nanay na boarding house, so delete na mi kaila usahay kung kinsay musulud gawas, anadiha. Wora po na unta among hangyo nga, unta matagaan ug pagtagad.
Okay, I'm sorry, I totally understand sa inyong concern, um, fast kuwan eh, um, for the information sa katong mga baggo. Um, kuwan magun eh, kanang bantuk wala namunas sulbadali kay tungut nag-change ug kuwan chairmanship. So karoon, siguro, ma-refer na munas pa balik sa Committee sa Lanyos. Again, any question from the body for this?
Uh, Mr. Chair, nagpaabot ko sa transmital unsay, nahitabuo atong last inspection nilang konsihal tralba. Wala pa manggod na transmit sa kuha, inahahna na ko dud, para akong mananaw unsay, unsay, unsay resulta silang inspection dito.
Okay, I think Honorable Palalon have some idea of this matter.
Good morning to each and everyone, good morning, sir. Uh, regarding the transmital of the letter, I still don't have the copy. So I will follow up the previous chairman sa Lanyos and I will transmit it to the new chairman of the Committee on Lanyos. And I thought si Honorable Alcoriza ang chairman and it was, uh, Honorable Alibutan. So I will trans, uh, transmit it if I will have the copy.
Thank you, Honorable Palalon.
Yes, po, thank you.
Sa kuwan na siya, Mr. Chair, sa copy lang sa katong kuwan or katong unsay inyuhang comment or remarks based sa inyuhang kuwan? Based sa inyuhang last nga kuwan?
The file, I will give the file.
Thank you.
Okay. Anymore question from the body? Tribunan, sir, um, thank you, rest assured na matrabaho namang tali karoon.
Thank you, kayo, sige, salamat sa tanan.
Okay, so, uh, again, thank you, Mr. Ariel.
Um, please kuwan ibili ng contact number kay para makahatag me, uh, para ma-kuwan. Dito lang sa mga konstap.
Dyan, dyan eh, palihog dyan.
Thank you, next visitor, Mr. Flor.
Alright, uh, so, uh, our next, uh, uh, visitor is, uh, from the office of the municipal mayor. Uh, I think he has an invitation to attend to the regular session, Mr. Jonah Picori.
Sir, you may have the floor now.
Huh? Ah, si Evelyn? Ah, unahan na dud, si Evelyn? Ah, okay, so there's a special request, uh, from the HRMO, uh, from Evelyn Salvania. So you are already recognized, Lynn?
Ma'am, you may have the floor now.
Nakabalik?
Uh, good morning, our presiding officer, Honorable Ayan Sabion and the rest of the council. Uh, by the way, for those nga, wala pagdud kaila sa kuha kay after nine years, nabalik na dud ko sa akong original office, which is the Human Resource Management Office. So I am Evelyn T. Salvania, uh, staff ko sa atong HR, the person of Ma'am Zani, Arzani Solis, uh, Santos Solis. Okay, in behalf of our HRMO, I was tasked to remind specially sa atong SB members and staff to comply what is required sa HRMO. Uh, mostly sa inyong mga staff, gi tagaan na mo ug checklist, checklist what to comply. So first thing, pagdelete ninyo ni ma-comply, it will affect sa inyo ang first salary vouchers. Kay most of the requirements required, iattach ni sa inyo ang first salary vouchers. Dayon, ami isang aform from the DILG, need dud ninyo ni i-comply within 10 days. So ang proseso ani is, upon completion, i-receives HR, usan ni siya ipareceives sa DILG. So far, ang nag-submit sa amua ug naami kap-kopya is only si Honorable Dangpalan and Honorable Janil Boardner Andalahaw. So the rest, wala pagdud me, nakareceive sa mga document required by the HR. So mamalihog lang sabi, so far daghan po kay inyong mga bagong staff, uh, garequire po ng HR, sa tanan niyong mga staff, to submit personal data sheet, at the same time, copy sa ilang contract of service as record purposes. Kay last time manggod, uh, ang HR so far, wala sila copy, masking sa PDS sa mga staff sa SB and a copy of contract of service. Uh, maabot ang time, pagmawala na sila staff, moatug HR, maingon nga. Ma'am, mga imi ug employment certification. So kunun sa man among i-certify, ni masking first name, middle name, wala mi kabalo. Kay wala mi records sa HR, ug ganus among nagsugod ug nagsstart as employee sa inyong mga respective nga mga SB member. So isa po na sa among konsens sa HR kay, all we know, ang HR is record keeper gina, sa tanang data sa mga empleyado sa LGU. So naapa mangga itrigi mention po dud si Ma'am Zani, nga kabalo gud siguro ni si Sir Ayan, katong ordinance requiring all employees gamusulud sa LGU will undergo drug test. Di lang ko sure ug i-implement pagdudato ni karoon or, or, ordinance sa manggod di siya sir, which is, Sir Ayan oh, tinoon ni Sir Ayan, inyong ordinance joke, oo. So katulang po, a sort of reminder kanatong tanan.
Ano yun ma'am, random drug test?
Mura, result na gud sa amua sir, iattach sa inyong PDS, oo.
Ma'am, kanan, mayo siguro, asaman tapu di magpad-drug test, anak kanang accredited siguro?
Accredited sa kuwan, di, oh, wala man po sa inyong...
Ini-drug testing kuwan?
Oo, drug testing center.
Puydilag binuangan ba, kanang lain ramo pa?
Ayan lang po, magbigong answer, be honest, talang putang.
Kina ngan siguro nga, naatay kanang atuabang kuwan. Asa ang inyong...
AG Diagnostic, ang accredited nga, uh, drug test, oh, sige, pasa lubong center, oo. Dayon, as, isingit talang po na ko ni Sir Dayon, as part of the ICMC family, being one of the board of director sa atong ICMC, basin ganahan mo, especially sa mga bagong staff, bagong na-elect, na magpa-member sa atong IPIL Community Multi-Purpose Cooperative. Especially katong mga staff nga, mura, bago dud, na daghan gud karoon. So open ang atong ICMC, nga mag-submit mo ug name for those who are interested to undergo the PMS, which is mogunay prerequisite before momahimong member sa atong IPIL Community Multi-Purpose Cooperative, which will be held anytime in August. Amo pang i-finalize ang date, then we will make an announcement for the final schedule para sa PMS. Okay.
Anymore question from the body? Ma'am?
Oo, sige, pwede regyad, pwede regyad.
Ping.
Ah, ma'am. Uh, ang services na dud sa kuop, uh, magpalon ka salary loan up to 500,000 pesoses. Datotan joke.
Interest pila.
Uh, interest rate is 18% per annum diminishing. Uh, diminishing siya Dayon. Uh, aside from the salary loan, we have educational, 20,000. We have the grocery loan of 10,000. Uh, special loan, kung ganahan mo mamaligya na sa iyong bonus, andam na gud ang kuop mo palit. At 2% interest per month. Oh, ano regyad, si Sir Hasim, si, 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 Sir Toto, sige siya katawa kay maka-relate gud siya. Uh, 18% per annum, pero siya sir, diminishing. Oo, ano siya sir. So, ang among maisra is, lo na, ano regyad siya. So, any question?
Any question?
Oh, reminder, gumi sa iyong requirement sa, maloo in town mo sa HR.
Uh, yes, good morning, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, naabatae deadline to set the, uh, all the records na you need para sa tanan to comply.
Oh, ang katong sa DILG, ma'am, na sila rulings nga to be submitted within 10 days upon assumption to office. So the deadline will be on July 10. So the rest of the requirements, which is nga, iattach sa inyong salary voucher. So before siguro mga 20 siguro sa July kay, amo pang mag-isegregate para sa inyong first salary voucher to be submitted sa accounting, para mahimuan na mo sa inyo ang first salary vouchers. Para at least delete po kay madali ang inyong mga sweldo.
Okay, any more question? Yes, Honorable Apit?
Na na man dud gaderimo mo, kanang, lahi panggudya kung buatan na, pero kuwan, kanang, can you provide us the list, kanabeto atong mga empleyado nga 10 years na nga nagtrabaho diri, nga wala movement sa ilahang posisyon?
Okay, sir, noted.
Kay, luoy man sa sila god, nga dugay na kayo, nga wala movement sa ilang posisyon, bang uban, hapit na namuri tayo.
Yes, sir.
Palihog ko, hatag sa list, ma'am?
Oh, sa, i-direct na mo sa inyong sir, hatag.
Tanan siguro, may tagaime tanan?
Okay, copy first, okay, sir, noted.
Thank you.
Okay, any more question? I think tribunan, ma'am, thank you guys pagpa-remind sa inyong...
Hello, sir, sir.
Thank you, guys, sir.
Honorable Apit?
Hi, query, lastly.
Sir, pwidi maginsert kadali, napaday isa.
Yes, okay, go ahead.
Kuwan reminder lang po sa inyong mga peel health number and pag-ibig number. Kay kung wala mo'y mga peel health number o pag-ibig number, it will affect sa amo ang remittance. Delete daw dud sa respective agency kung wala mo'y peel health o pay health number o pag-ibig number, i-return ang among remittance. Kay ang importante ang inyong dud number.
Yes, Honorable Apit? Query lang dito sa katungkuwan ba, katong sa DILG bitao? Kaming mga ex-officio apil medito?
Delete na, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
I think, uh, Honorable Palalon still have a question, ma'am?
If wala, may labot ma'am, di hatagan na ba mi ug copy?
Ang katulang sa DILG, ma'am.
Yes.
Pero bukumplay mo katong, the rest nga girequire sa inyo agapon.
Ah, okay, so the DILG requirement, wala na may labot mga ex-officio?
Oo, wala man mo na-elect, ma'am, oo, remain kuwan man mo.
Okay. Tribunan? Ma'am, ma'am, thank you sa pagvisita, thank you sa pagpa-remind sa mong daghan padaygahing SB member ulo, ug namimutangan. Okay, next visitor, Mr. Flor?
Okay, uh, our next visitor is, uh, uh, Jonah Picori from the mayor's office.
Sir, you may have the floor now.
Uh, good morning, sir, good morning to the August body. Uh, ako ang i-report in regards sa katong, atong scholarship bitao. Uh, actually, wala dud na mo na-process, tanan, tanan nga mga scholar, kar... Uh, actually, wala dud na mo na-process, tanan, tanan nga mga scholar Karun. Uh, muhang yo' lang eh, kaya katong mga staff sa ato ang mga kuncihal, isubmit nila early, ang katong sa first quarter. Kay ang ato ang, ang mga bagong, murag second semester naman masulod ilaha. Ang mga daan, naapa man sila, first semester sa June. Kay murag October man, ato ang second semester nga enrollment, so ang katong mga daan, muhang yo' ming, ma-submit na'to, kay ako na pong gi-process ang katong inyuhang outstanding katong sa second semester last year.
Okay.
Katulang.
Any question from the body? Um, okay, question sir. Pwede makatag ug list tungkol na ngayon?
Yes, sir, sir.
Kaya basi ng uban po, uh, sa mga ratong eh, kwan.
Kaya ang katong among natapok, ang katulang na ay mga requirements. Di, wal, ang katong wala'y requirements, dili pa na ba siya ma-bayran dyan siya? Amo na ihatag ang katong list dud sa, tanan nga scholar na'to.
Thank you. Any more question?
Yun, kanang, pwede, kanang, og na ay nag-iskwela outside Epeel.
Magmowa taniya, sir.
Magmowa.
Sa school.
School.
Og ang LGU.
Okay.
Tapos, ang remittance, ang treasury, meri hand carry dyan la personal hatun sa school.
Okay.
Kada kuncihal nos fifty thousand, kada isa?
Kayo aw eh, maora ka yapano, sir, ang inyong.
Maora ba?
Okay, okay, sir.
Og, duhara kabuo, masangkatulag yapano fifty thousand?
Murag, ang ato ang, ang ato ang mowa, murag five thousand kada.
Maximum?
Oo, ang ato maximum.
I, i, kwan, gini mo, gamitun gini mo sa.
Gamitun gudan mo. Namatay existing ordinance, ano, sir, murag five thousand kada bata.
Five thousand na gyan dya siya.
Okay. Any more question? Yes, na balabutan.
Uh, kabahay na kang Jonah, uh, sir Jonah, napabay budget karang sa second semester para sa scholar?
Narara, narata.
Uh, pilaganika, si Jantiam, ang ihatag sa among lotmetana?
Pulok ang mga kuncihal. Uh, at ilay pila ang sa Vice Mayor? Fifty ang sa Vice Mayor. Dayon.
Pulok, pulok.
Okay, any more question from the body? Okay, sir, thank you.
Okay, so thank you, uh, John.
Floor leader, next visitor, please.
Okay, Mister Chair, our next visitor, uh, naghangiyo maguneh kay Magnadi Lakaw, ato nalang ihatag, ang atong acting treasurer, uh, Ms. Maria Luz Pulmano.
Okay, ma'am, you may have the floor now, you're now recognized.
Good morning to the Sangguliang Bayan Members and to everyone present today. Uh, I am, akong presensya Karung Adlawa, is in answer to the invitation of the Sangguliang Bayan Members. And to inform everyone, katungwa pa na kailan ako, I am Maria Luz Efunmano, the acting municipal treasurer of Epeel. And I acted as M- municipal treasurer last March twenty eight, twenty twenty five. So meaning, it's been three months lang noong ang nag-act ko as municipal treasurer. Uh, the invitation with, is regarding the, um, offsetting of rents, sa atong vegetable area, meat section and dried fish section. And to shed light on the concern of the Sangguliang, whatever collection that the municipal treasurer's office made, is in accordance with the tax ordinances nga existing sa atong municipio no. And sa ato ang dried fish market, uh, dried fish, meat section and vegetable area, ang atong basis sa atong collection sa rent is in accordance with market code na'to nga six one seventy two thousand three pa ni siya. So wala siya na revised, dila na siya katuig. So wala pa na siya na revised, meaning, uh, any collection regarding sa rent, ano ang area, based pagyapon ano nga, kaning ordinance sa.
Okay, any question from the body?
And to update lang, uh, everybody, sa rent ani, for the dried fish and vegetable area, based atong ordinance, four hundred four pesos and fifty centavos per square meters na siya no. And an area sa, ano nga mga stalls is two point eighty-eight square meters na siya, which is equivalent to twelve point ninety-six per square meter per day. Kung i-compute na siya in two monthly, so three hundred eighty-eight point eighty-eight, or equivalent to three ninety pesos na siya kung i-round off siya. Sa meat section po, it's ten pesos per square meters times one point fifty-five squ- uh, square meters, fifteen pesos per day, equivalent to four hundred fifty pesos per month. Per record of the office, um, ako lang inform everyone nga, three months pa lang ko nag-act as municipal treasurer, and whatever katong ni transpire nga, panag isturya siguro, including our, the late, at the previous municipal treasurer, so wala man na-endorse sa kuwan no, kung unsa man. Meaning, ang ako ang pag-inform derye sa body is per record of the office. So, per record of the office, fifty percent payment of those stalls started i- in June twenty twenty-four. Pero before na unigit rate nga payment per receipt, per recording, uh, nangita dud mi base sa collection, ano fifty percent lang, meaning, sa dried fish and vegetable area, one hundred ninety-five na siya ang half. And for the meat section, four fifty man, meaning ang half ano is two hundred fifty-five. So, naninkamot ang opisina to secure, uh, basis for the collection. Indeed, we have a copy of the resolution, number zero nine six two one twenty twenty-four, approving the mowa and authorizing the ma- mayor Anamel C. Olegario to enter into and sign in behalf of the LGU, with the occupants of the vegetable, dried fish and meat section of the public market. Kaning nga copy sa, nadawat, uh, nakuha na mo, early this year lang, twenty twenty-five. So meaning, if we are going to compute, nagui, uh, balance ang mga stalls for June, uh, June until September, kay per mowa, naka-stated ito, ang collection will start on September twenty twenty-four. So maulang to kay, if, if na i-question ang body, uh, ay, akong i-incourage na lang no. Kasi pa'y kinaanglan inyong mahibalan, so.
Mister Chairman?
Okay, yes, honorable, you're now recognized.
Thank you very much, Mister Chair. Just for information of this August body, our public market was, uh, uh, experienced, uh, what is this? Um.
Fire?
Fire. Sometimes, June ten, twenty twenty-two. And since then, our market vendors occupying the vegetable, the dried fish and the meat section, were occupying, our space within the, the perimeter road. Okay? So after two long years, we tried our best in our own effort, because we understand that the local government unit of Epeel has no budget in putting up in new stalls. Magpasalamat lang may, keno, naatupan ang ato ang mercado. And, in fact, wala pa dud gali na, na-grant, although there was a resolution, approving our request nga katong mga burned materials, will be donated to the Epeel Central Market Association. But it, it's only good for, uh, resolution, approved resolution, pero wala dud na tuman. However, as I said, wala'y punto ang local government unit of Epeel and, so we tried our best in the part of the market vendors, no? We asked the engineering department to, to estimate the cost of materials sa pagconstruct of stalls sa meat section, sa vegetable section, o sa, uh, dried fish section. So, if I am not mistaken, insofar as meat section is concerned, murag twenty thousand. Twenty thousand is the cost, or was the cost, dayon, ang ato ang vegetable ogan dried fish section, ten thousand per stall. So the fact that we have no budget, we agreed among ourselves, mga market vendors nga kami ni gasto. Kay gusto man ato nga mapahiluna ang ato ang mercado, tungod taliwala sa kainit, og magbaha, og magulan, mag-sakripisyo intang ang atong, dili lang ato ang mga negosyante, as well as our de-consuming public. That's why, we, we, we spent our own money, no? Wala na even a single centavo, wala na gigasto ang municipio ano. And our request was to charge our expenses against our rental. This is just for the information of everybody, nga noong fifty percent ang gi-gicobra sa ato ang treasury. But may we know, in our end, kung huntod ganus sa mahuman ang among pagbayad anang, anang fifty percent. No? When was that, uh, deduction of the pi- fifty percent out of our stool rentals, no? Nagstart sa ug hunton, ganus ano siya? Ngahimong madidak sa atong mga market vendors.
Okay, thank you, honorable, ma'am, madam sa'yo, um, treasurer, please.
Um, regarding sa computation sa years, uh, this data is given by the mido, no, sign ni Benibik Pagara, Pagara and the previous mido officer, nga si Boyet Sumatra. So, sa ano, as I, kwan. Per mowa, ang na-sign with the may, previous mayor and the occupants, the collection will start on September twenty twenty-four supposedly. Pero ang payment nga naitabu, per record of the office, is in June twenty twenty-four. So meaning, uh, dun na pay balances ang mga occupants from June to August. So, um, mo expect na lang siguro sila, na by the time nga magpa-compute sila sa ilang mga balances, so may include yun na'mo'to sa computation. But per record nga ihatag sa mido, uh, derye sa, ilang ihatag, ang project cost is ten thousand for dried fish and vegetable area. Uh, mo-cover ang fifty percent payment for four point twenty-seven years, meaning four mo- four years and three ma- three months exact, i-round off siya, and for meat. Yes, for meat section, seven years and four months. So mo na siya, ang per computation nga ihatag sa mido.
Uh, Mister Chair?
Yes, floor leader.
Okay.
You may have the floor now.
Uh, thank you for that information. Actually, I am also handling the same information that the treasurer is talking about. The ten thousand project cost for dried fish and vegetable section, amounting to ten thousand pesos, will be paid up, sa as promised by the local government unit of Epeel, up to four and point twenty-seven, that's, uh, four and three month, four years and three months. Mister Chairman, first of all, of course, I would like to, of course, acknowledge and appreciate the effort, uh, given by the previous administration in relation, in response to the need of our, of our, uh, people at the Epeel Public Market. But, you know, if you try to look at this figure on a monthly basis, it's only fifty-one point twenty-eight. Mister Chairman, first of all, I, for the record, madam, acting, uh, municipal treasurer, is our area that was raised to by fire at the Epeel Public Market was insured, or not?
Yes.
So if it's yes, have we claimed the fire insurance coverage for, for that building already?
Uh, kwan lang, in, ano lang, it has been claimed, pero i-check na ko ang records further, kwan.
Pero it has been claimed already, okay. Why not that fire proceeds, fire insurance proceeds be given immediately to the fire victims? Remember, lisobipod pangitaong ng jismil? Imo ng gipatuko diha, niya bayran raka og fifty-one pesos on a monthly basis by the local government unit of Epeel? Why not make use of the fire insurance proceeds to pay our obligations to our people? At the end of the day, it's our property, it's the local government unit of Epeel. In fact, para na ko makaulaw, ma'mpo na nga, ang atong mga negosyante mo, yatong patukurun sa, sa establishment. Para na ko, ako, I would like to propose, Mister Chair, that we will revisit this, and perhaps we can have, uh, if we have the money, kung naaman tung insurance, atong usbun eh, ihatag na'to direktamente ng jismil, ogan ang bintimil para mahuman ang problema. So that we can, oh, go back immediately to, uh, rentals nga watnae deduction. Og, pwede naganipuntang, nga muhang yo' nila nga atong i-increase gamay po, para pukitanapod gamay ang atong, local government unit of Epeel.
Okay.
So that's all, Mister Chair, thank you.
Okay, any more question?
Mister Chair, um, I just want also to, uh, uh, since we are considering on reviewing the market code, and there will be a probable alteration in terms of the fees, will this affect the contract?
Uh, ang atong kontrata sa mga stalls, annually na siya nagausub. So meaning, if mo take effect ang ordinance sa, so dito na po siya magsugod. Pero for the information, everybody, annually siya mag- magusub ang kontrata.
Okay. Any more question?
Madam. Madam, tres, kanan, mo't ano lang po wala, assistance sa ihatag ang ato ang LGU, sa katong mga nasunugan?
Uh, with regards to assistance, sir, we can have an update from the budget office regarding that matter.
Pero na, na, naay kanang assessment, baka, kaney siya nga stall pila, pilay na damaged sa iyahang goods, naay assessment ba ano?
We have not, uh, we have no record regarding that, sir. Ang treasurer's office wala'y record ano, but I believe, na katong computation nga ihatag sa, from engineering office will, uh, kwan nga, mau'to ang cost sa ilahang.
Mister Chairman?
Yes, honorable, you're now recognized.
For the information of this August body, the fire victims were able to receive, uh, kas- assistance from the local government unit of Epeel, amounting to five thousand pesos, and as well as the province of Sambogga, Cibogay, amounting to three thousand pesos.
Eight thousand all in all?
Eight thousand, all in all. But, the damage that we have, my god.
Thank you.
Mister Chair?
Yes, Mister Floor.
With the, what we are doing in the local government unit of Epeel, actually, we are not really helping. We just responded to our need. O sa may need na'to, ang building, gisunog, atong patukurun ang atong negosyante sa ilang kwarta, then bayaran na'to, kinkuital pesos kada bulan, mahal pa mang litros ko, kana. We have only responded our own need, but we have not responded fully to the need of our affected, uh, negosyante at the Epeel Public Market. Again, I appreciate what we have done, but this is not enough for me, Mister Chair.
So, as the presiding officer.
Mister Chairman, in connection with that, uh, with that idea of the honorable presiding officer, may request, uh, the mido perhaps, or the engineering, Mister Chairman, to also render. to also render their commi- their their report as to the the damage and perhaps the, um, the, uh, kay I-I-I heard, I understand that the four million pesos, if I'm not mistaken, insurance sa ato merkado were also spent. Part of that, uh.
Tula, not four.
Okay. Kay nagasto man og electricity and other materials ang ato ang local government unit of Epeel. No, delay maputo gastos sa ato ang mga market vendors. And I-I-I believe that the LGU also spent, if I am not mistaken, more than two million also for that electricity. So, ato ang ta nga par transparenta, matagaan ta og report ano sa atong engineering og sa Mido.
Okay, okay, thank you. As the Presiding Office, um, Officer, I would like to request the members of this body to refer it back to the committee for some review. Kasi I think, um, Madam Treasurer already manifest na delay pa siya ang treasurer to that time. So, so again, um, can you move?
Mister Chair, I move that this matter will be referred to the Committee on Market, chaired by Honorable Joel Abel, as well as the Committee on Infrastructure, chaired by Honorable Hasim, no, Hasim?
Okay, this matter will be referred.
For further study and for their recommendation, Mister Chair.
Okay, this matter will be referred committee.
Mister Chair, prior to the closure of the referral, may I also suggest that this, since this is a memorandum of agreement, there is involvement of memorandum of agreement on this matter, may it be also referred to the.
Committee on Rules. Okay, so it's going to be referred to the three committees, Mister Chairman. Committee on Market as the lead committee, uh, Committee on Infrastructure and Committee on Rules and Ordinances and Resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Floor. Uh, this matter will be referred on Committee on Infrastructure, Committee on Market, and Committee on Rules. Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Next, next visitor, Mister Floor.
Next visitor is we have Engineer Carlito Kulankulan, uh, the Municipal Engineer of the Municipality of Epeel.
Sir, you may have the floor now. Dugay dugay na 'yung gagihulat diri.
To our Presiding Officer, Honorable Ian Glenn Sabion, to our, uh, Majority Floor Leader, Jong Alkurisa, uh, honorable members of Sangganyang Bayan of Epeel, staff, friends, and visitors, good morning. I am here with the invitation to shed light on the operation of the Municipal Engineers Office. Um, under the administration of our new mayor, Mayor Reps. Royde Oligario, with our Municipal Administrator Attorney Ray Oligario, uh, there is an order to the Engineering Department to give services sa Epelenios immediately. So, as with that, if you will roam around in this our LGU building, there is a remarkable improvement, especially in our road networks, no? There are already established shouldering, uh, graveling, and even we have, we are also prepared the area for the area ng Epeel. And considering that, uh, that was done in just the first week of the administration. Second, regarding the leak in our building roofings, uh, the maintenance of from the Engineering Department has already fixed that, provided that materials were immediately provided through the close supervision of our Municipal Administrator Attorney Ray. Then third is concern. Nasa'toy katulo ma'am.
Please ask for two minutes.
Oh.
Okay, back order.
Thank you, Mister Chair, and third is the, our mayor, Ramses Troy facilitated and invited the technician from Dakin, Kagayan, and they arrived yesterday, they conducted their validation, and maybe few days from now, they will be submitting their quotation, and after that, uh, funds will be provided under the office of the mayor. So, atong problema sa aircon for more than two years will be addressed, no? Because that is sa kampanyang magyuna, and sorry for kuwan sa una, we we want to work, but please do understand. And about the ceiling, there is already paints provided in the department, but it will be work during, not during office hours, so rest assured. Although your engineers in the department daan, but we have new system and, uh, we can deliver especially if materials will be provided sooner, so, thank you.
Any more question from the body?
Uh, Honorable Chair.
Yes, Honorable.
Meron lang akong gusto ng palino sa ating, eh, ating engineering. Yun bang mga, kung mag-start ba tayo magcontract ng mga building, di ba may plano na yan? May plano, may budget, date of time, date finished, start, di ba meron na yan engineer?
Yes, Your Honor.
Pero namapansin ko, karamihan mga government projects, hanggang umpisa lang. Ay, tinamo ngayon, na paikot natin. Andaming building poro nakatiwangwang, ibig sabihin, uh, ano ba? Kasi nakikita natin 'yung, di ba sabi mo, if you go into contract or sa mga ganyan, kunst mga buildings, meron na ang budget, date start, sabi niya na budget, nakalagay na 'yung budget dyan, uh, building permit or other requirements, pero yun lang ah, napapansin ko lang engineer. Uh, di ba pwede malaman kung bakit 'yung mga ibang buildings na nandyan pa ngayon na nakatukod na hindi natapos? Thank you.
Go ahead, Engineer.
Thank you for that query, Honorable Dangpalan. Uh, first, if you will, uh, if you will ask about this building, this is worth eighty-eight billion from the DPWS, and that is only phase one. And another thing is that legislative building on that part, which is two-story building, that is, that is, the worth of that is thirty-eight million, phase one. Meaning, we cannot, we cannot argue with the DPWS because that is their project. And, you know, before, we have no proper coordination with them. Uh, thanks for this, this time. Um, the architect of Kong Marley has been in the office for sixth time. Uh, even yesterday, we have visited the office of the Vice Mayor, no? They had that, uh, by, what's this, Municipal Administrator yesterday, and then we went to the market, so our Congressman has a lot of project to be, to be given to the LGU. And besides, um, we have talked already with their architect that that building will be soon funded under the office of the Congressman, so it's a, uh, it's a good, uh, what's this, good news for Epeel. And if you notice about that executive building that is given by the former governor, no, sa previous, and that worth, that is worth fifteen million, but it is already completed and unohunahunahonin 'yung puno na na, all the rooms were, all the offices were occupied and uh, tungod kay, ang budget niya is humanggud for that, uh, structure. So, if, if DPWS is the one funding the the project and ma-origo na, uh, we cannot argue with them, Mister Chairman.
Yes, Honorable Masin, and.
Go ahead, Sir Chair. Uh, engineer kanang diha, usala gym manino, gym?
Yes, Your Honor.
Munan ay it eight million, munan na siya janter la phase one?
Phase one, yes, Your Honor.
Kimurutan ako, pamanohungan guba ng mga top? Wala mo'y apilana sa inspection sa kuwan, sa committee, so to inspect nga mauna bagin na siya ang iyang phase one? Wala mo'y apil sa municipio?
Wala, Your Honor.
Sa DPG na siya siya?
Precisely.
Thank you.
Okay, Honorable Masin, thank you.
Hello. Nana. Nana, thank you, Mister Sir. Um, as, uh, Chairman of Impra, sir, um, gusto na kuunta, um, mangutahan namin, mga kuwanan ako ang akong mga uban, um, regarding sa, unsa ba ang update sa mga ongoing projects sa Atua? Diri, og unsa pa ang mga wala na human? Oh, simple ang mga coming, so wala pa man, gusto lang ngayon update, sir, regarding sa mga, uh, ongoing na project na to karoon.
Thank you, Your Honor. For the information of everyone, our Budget Officer has, uh, prepared the updated, uh, budgeted structures, uh, ongoing structures for this LGU and maybe it will be submitted to the office of the mayor this morning. And after that, it will be, uh, it will be available, so we can have that, and especially the Chairman on Infrastructure, we can have that from the Budget Office, and that is official.
Okay, anymore? Yes, Honorable Ibol then?
Uh, pwede ba tamuhangyo sa ato ang Engineering Department? Kanibit ang mga program of works sa mga barangay? Kinaamang ko 'yung mga barangay nga magpahimo sila na lang sa gawas ni mubayad in town? Pwede ba'ta makextend o tabang sa ilahang ato na lang ilibre, magpahimo sa atong Engineering Officer?
Yes, yes, Your Honor, uh, for the information of everyone, all the program of works from barangays and to LGU and even, um, funds from national agencies, it will be, it is free, uh, we can accommodate that, but some, some barangay captains, they wanted to, they are preparing, they hired some private engineers for their program of works because they wanted dali. And, you know, even one barangay that that will, uh, uh, require a lot of, uh, bali daghan dito kay program of work even in barangay level, so please kuwan, because we are only, uh, kanang upat lang may ka-engineers dra. And considering that Epeel is categorized as city ang ato ang, ato ang behensa infrastructure activities, ma-consider tag city, so ulang yun. Pero anyway, we will try to handle that, so far, wala man migi balibaran, and that is the initiative of barangay captains, Your Honor.
Yeah, sige sir, thank you. And another, sir, unsa is, unsa is status atong quarry rito sa Palumok?
Uh, again, again, our new quarry is, our old quarry is now being utilized, if you can see, um, after the release of diesel last Wednesday, hours from that, the mayor has, um, asked permission from the governor to, so that we can, we can already haul materials from Palumok Titay to here, so nothing to worry about our, our quarry and the graveling for this, for the municipality by this time. And also, we have a new, maybe four hectares new quarry owned by the LGU, so wa-paton hilabtan. And old quarry is, has a lot of, caning item two hundred, item two hundred available, Your Honor.
Daghan pa tag makuha or gamay-gamay na lang?
Berting daghan na, Your Honor.
Daghan pa? Ang bago wala pa mahilapte?
Wala pa, Your Honor.
So, I hope nga muabot na sa atong ka barangayan, kay as experience, gikan magkuku sa barangay. So, as as experience, within nine years sa paglingkod sa atong previous administration, barangay Epeel hay, swalaguna karisip. Nebert, nakarisip og quarry, nebert, di paghulam, buk ikipo. Enta, bayda kuwan, eh, engineer ma-abot na sa atong ka barangayan nga, wala na'y piliun. Kanang wala, diri manggud si engineer sa unas kuwan, ngang diri si engineer kaliho, kena ilahing hari, gawas si engineer kulak-kulak. Napilahing hari, yun dito manangit. Ah, karoon siguro engineer, mura gula na, ikaw lagi ang magbuot.
Um, we have, I have to give honor to our mayor and our Municipal Administrator because we we work hand in hand, and if you can observe, Attorney Ray Oligario is always in the motor pool. So, siguro kung by now, if you will request a quarry and you have scheduled, hours lang siguro or tungag adlang, naanak.
Kuwan siguro engineer kanang iprioritize ba, unsa dito mga barangay nga mura guba gugayo, katu siguro siya unahon, unahon, tagaan ang priority?
Yes, Your Honor, under, but we still have to, to pamal-panangit from the mayor and administrator. And I have a system for that, no, clustering of barangays para diliingon nga magtrabaho tag buluan dahil ang sunod nga schedule sa dumundan. So, anyway, the system is already there and kuwan lang yun, pagapprove lang sa mayor na'to immediately.
Okay, thank you, engineer.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, in addition, Mister Chair.
Before acknowledge, Honorable Alcoriza, I think Honorable Masin first.
Adision na lang, Mister Chair, um, regarding sa, pwede tama ngayon, uh, peris copy katung sa mga, katunggy forward nimo, sir? Para sa mga ongoing, uh, project na'to sa LGU?
Precisely, Your Honor, after this, I will pass by with the Office of the Budget Officer, and, uh, ako ingnon nga. Uh, indeed, uh, maghatag dito sila sa Infrastructure Chairman of Copy for our ongoing projects, Your Honor.
Okay, Honorable Alcoriza, Your Honor recognize.
Yes, thank you.
Another, Mister Chair.
Okay.
For information, to the body, um, katung, last year siguro to, uh, katunggy sponsor ni late Honorable Farida Dampalan, katung rivers sa.
Dredging, Your Honor dredging.
Yes, yes, so karoon, ongoing na'to, Mister Chair. So, ang akong hangyo lang unta sa Atua kay engineer, um, kay from regional man'to, regional approved na'to, so ongoing na karoon, I think, one month na sir, no?
Precisely, Your Honor.
Yes, so, siguro kung pwede na'to mabisit dito sir, baka na'tay masuporta dito, kay gikan to sa Atua ang, ang resolution, no? So, um, maunang to, Mister Chair, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, yes, Honorable Alcoriza.
Yes, Honorable Chair, uh, I I would just like one, uh, make one request to Engineer Kulankulan, kindly include, i-check down ng dalan mitaw likod sa masiba dun andres, kay, uh, naabot sa ato ang reports nga, dagan mga tumbad ya, kay portikyong danluga, lapu kaayu pakicheck na lang. Masig pwede na'to maapil sa ato ang graveling, thank you.
Well noted, Your Honor, it will be addressed because we have a lot of diesel fuel by now.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Mister Chair. Um, okay, before acknowledge, Honorable Ibol, I think, um, Honorable, um, Katalunya, raise her ha, her hands first.
Engineer, uh, uh, isa lang sad sa concern, um, I hope, uh, aside from the repainting of the ceiling, you will look into the leaks, kasi, uh, diha magyun siya, no, along sa, uh, office na moni, cons Dangpalan and, um, across, uh, kay former, former constoral baang dagan sa tubig. So, we cannot actually hold office because, especially during heavy rain, maglick dud siya, basagyo ang floor. So, I also hope that aside from the repainting of the ceiling, you will look into the leaks kung asa siya, thank you.
Honorable Ibol, you know recognize.
May I ask the Engineering Department if you were the one who facilitated the placement of rubber matting in the public market?
Uh, as I heard, uh, it was the initiative of our mayor, Your Honor.
It's not engineering?
Uh, because it was already installed before, before nag-naglingkod ang new administration, it was already installed.
Okay, kay nalay portion nito nga, nga walay rubber mat, maunang daghan paghihapon ng aligin?
Sa akong information, um, initiative ni mayor, no, ang pagbutangan na, so muna akong kuwan, so I think, yes, engineer.
Um, for your information, uh, almost every afternoon, our Municipal Administrator and I, uh, went to the public market and we are looking for katung mga kulang, so wala ng nanotis na mo kagahapon. But anyway, I will, after, uh, from here, I will pass by at the Administrator's office and we will discuss about that.
Okay, thank you for that.
Another, Mister Chair, is regarding. Another, Mr. Chair is regarding the roofing of ah and very of Honorable Catalunya, our crew is already fixing that licking, but ah aga-hapon, nag tanaw sila, pero taliksik pamangod, so anyway, we will fix that because we have, ah we have ah sealant materials available in the office.
Okay, no more questions, Honorable Alibutan?
Ah, Mr. Chair, ah, nangayok man si Consel Mazin o katong mga ongoing projects na to sa municipal? Can pwede na to sir include kanang, unsa is status sa atong project, pila nakapercent ang na-implement?
Exactly, your honor, maod dyan ang, ang content kanang nasugda na o six status, naadito ang percentages and ah ibyan ang mga, mga, mga billings sa contractors naangat.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, Honorable Palalon?
Good morning, sir, ah I would like to take this opportunity since naanaman kadiri karoon. Ah mangutahan nalang ko, if ah you have any idea, if kanos, ah siya ma-turnover or pwede na ba mi mo utilize sa Liga and SK Federation building?
Again, that building is under DPWS and wala ko'y
Aso wala pa'y
Give updates on that, Honorable Palalon.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no more question? Engineer, thank you kayo, murag daghan papukag lakaw na, so lastly, status sa ITTC?
ITTC, ah thank you, your honor. Um, I have not visited that since the new administration and ah anyway, I will try to, I will try to inspect that this afternoon and then we will give updates on that, sorry, your honor.
Okay, thank you, so dili na kayo minakamo, kay hold kay murag daghan papukag trabaho, thank you kayo sa engineer sa pagvisitas.
Thank you, thank you, Engineer Carlito Kulankulan Junior?
Next visitor, Mr. Flor?
So far, this is going to be our last visitor for this morning. Salamat sa ginunong last nagin. Our ITTC representative, ah Ms. Donalin Alasyo.
Okay, ma'am, you may have the floor now. Your honor recognize?
Good morning, everyone, kaning ako ang gi-representing ma-maila kay Nasay schedule sa ihang treatment today. So regarding sa operations sa ITTC, ready na ang time to transfer pero wala pa man napirma na mong elec, sa mo ang kuryente sa electrical engineer, so motong wala pa din. Karoon, gipangawat ang mga electrical wires.
Nah.
Then ang, so diri pa po ni ma ka, sugudog training diha kay wala pa'y phase two, so ang required area sa test da, diri pa pwede. So dito pa misa mo ang daan nga opisina pero naragia po may training, ah funded by LGU. So galabliho training may every barangay, ka barangay may, namin sa barangay Tarsa Babriara, Soklema, Bankeruan, and Publasyon.
Ma'am?
Yes?
Can you identify unsa ang mga training ngayong ikandak dya?
Ah, food processing, cookery, and bread and pastry and cake making.
So, naay mga, kamua ang mosurois sa kada barangayan or dalon sila dya?
Kami ang ato kay, ang ato ang building nga daan, diri na po siya kuwan, kaning proper nga ma training kay ga tulog na. Pwede po mo mubisit dito, pwede?
Ah, parehiot ang nagtulog. So, di namikinalan mubisit dito kay kabalo nami unsa onang mutulo ang ato.
Anymore question from the body?
Ah, Mr. Chair?
Yes, floor leader.
Ah, Ma'mlin, kanang I think the training for like cooking, baking, et cetera, et cetera, has been going on for quite some time already. Ma'am, can you ah tell us or prove to us nga, nanagiagi ang atong programs, for example, let's go back to our trainees before, nga perhaps karoon, can you cite one or two? nga nanagid sila, nag-business na sila, nakahimo na sila, ilahang kuwan, nagamit ang ilang mga abilities?
Ang uban na na sa DepEd.
Na sa DepEd?
Yes, nagteacher na sila, kena kuwan naman sila CNC two. Dagana kayo tag mga estudyante nga na na sa DepEd. Then naaputay mga estudyante nga, ga humra sila, sa Balera sila kabuhatin, ga deliver. Naaputay isa kay estudyante nga bagura, ga buhatin siya sa ilang balik pero na, sad to say, namatay na siya kay Nasay. Tinungo katong tagasa nito, taga ipil-ipil.
Pero at least train siya?
Yes.
Hmm, pagabot sa langit. Mayos ang mangluto. Oo, kana ang among gustong may balan because we want to see results.
Yes.
Because we have ah invested a lot dya sa ITTC and that's good. Ah anyway, aron ang ipil, I think one of the showcase during the ah, aron ang ipil is ah the food ah sunny, during the opening of the Agro Trade Fair, it's going to be a food fair also. So unta, maappear na to tong mga na-train sa ITTC, no, nga mag ah
Naging encourage me sa mga katong gi barangay barangay na maging encourage na mo sila nga, maappear sila.
Ah, okay, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you, any more question from the body?
No more, ang amo na lang mga pagampu sa imong boss nga
Yes, sir.
Ah sayang health, no, let, let us, I'd like to ah kuwan bakanang ah request every member of this August body to also offer prayers for ah one of our employee nga dunay mga ingon ana, nga mga issues sa health. Also, we will pray for Honorable Joel always, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Um, no more visitor, Mr. Flor?
Ah, praise the Lord. Wala na'y bisito.
Um, the chair would like to know who would like to avail the privilege hour, Mr. Flor?
Um, Mr. Chair?
Yes? Honorable Dampalan, your honor recognize?
I would, I would like to ah have a privilege motion. Ah that I will ask permission to have my vacation. Ah, so, I ask permission to leave, should see. Gusto ko lang ma-vacation and also to visit my mother, he's already ninety-nine years old. Ah this ah maybe ah today, after decision.
Okay, let's go.
Yon lang sir. Yon lang, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Dampalan. Anyone who would like to avail the privilege hour?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, floor leader?
Thank you, thank you very much for acknowledging, Mr. Chair. I'd like to avail of this privilege hour. First of all, to the presiding officer, Honorable Ian Sabihon, to our secretary, ah to the other members and to my colleagues in this legislative council of the local government unit of IPIL, to our staff. Ladies and gentlemen, good morning. Ah of course, first of all, I would like to congratulate one of our colleagues in the Sanggunyang Bayan of IPIL in the person of Honorable Mazin Hasim for being newly elected as the PCL Regional President just recently. Palakpakan po na to si Honorable Hasim. It is our pride and honor to have a regional president for the League of Councilors for the first time in the history of the town of Ipil and perhaps first time in the province of Sambongasibugay. Naapatay na regional president sa una from Sibugay, na na, ah but at least ah really? Ah, but you are the first ah in the history of the Sanggunyang Bayan of IPIL. So salamat, palakpakan na to si Honorable Hasim. Of course, I'd like to express my trust and confidence to our new president for the region that he will spearhead programs for us legislators in Region Nine as we try to achieve excellence in public service in terms of legislation. Secondly, what I am about to bring to the attention of all the members of this thirtieth Legislative Council of Ipil and ah of course, this goes to the office of the local chief executive, the Honorable Mayor Ramses Troy Oligario. Is an issue that greatly affects our leadership in the municipality as we are always mandated to adhere to the principles of transparency and accountability. Mr. Chairman, last Friday of last week, my attention was called by no less than our municipal mayor, Honorable Ramses Troy de Oligario because he was greatly affected by some issues reaching his office in relation to our municipal market and the way we manage one of the most important local government functions that indeed plays an important role to our day-to-day lives as Ipilinios. What I am trying to raise this morning, Mr. Chair, is the way LGU Ipil, the Municipal Economic Enterprise and Development Office, or MIDO in particular, handles the distribution and issuances of stall rights at the new perimeter stalls located at our Ipil Public Market in barangay Don Andres Ipil. Again, the mayor's summon to this representation as vice-chair of the Committee on Market focuses so much on the manner of adjudicating the twenty-four stalls by the previous administration of the new two-story building in the public market or the so-called new perimeter stalls. This representation upon review found out that there are twelve stalls belonging to the first level of the building and each stall has a name assigned on it that assures us of its occupancy. In fact, the record which I got from the MIDO shows the monthly rentals of three thousand pesos per stall to the local government of IPIL. There are also twelve stalls in the second level of the building. However, Mr. Chairman, based on the document again which I got from the MIDO, it seems there is only one occupant in those twelve stalls in the second level. In fact, the monthly rentals assigned to that one particular name is no longer three thousand but thirty-six thousand, that is equivalent to twelve stalls. And it of, it proves therefore that the second level is indeed occupied by one businessman only. Furthermore, in that same meeting last Friday of last week with the, our local chief executive, he further told this representation that an unnamed market businessman approached him in his office just days before and told him that one stall in that building is now for sale for a whopping one million pesos. Let me remind this August body, Mr. Chairman, that based on the market code under ordinance number six dash one seven three dash two oh oh three and ordinance, amending ordinance number nine dash one six seven dash two oh oh two, otherwise known as the Market and Slaughterhouse Code of the municipality of Ipil, particularly on the transitory provision, so on and so forth. In section fifteen, the market committee section, Mr. Chair, states that the said committee being chaired by the municipal mayor, municipal treasurer, SB committee chairman on market, legal officer if we have, and the president of the Market Vendors Association as members to the committee shall certiva, certify to the Sanggunyang Bayan the adjudications made and shall serve as the advisory body of the municipal mayor and the Sanggunyang Bayan on matters affecting market operation and management. I just do not know, Mr. Chair, if Honorable, our colleague here, being the president of the Market Vendors has participated in this activity. In sixteen point B of section sixteen of the market ordinance, it clearly says that no person shall sell, offer for sale any of our stalls in the public market, Mr. Chairman, it's very clear. Eighteen point A point C of section eighteen of the same market code sets the limit of number of stalls to be awarded to only two stalls. This is practically opposite to what we have witnessed, Mr. Chairman. The twelve stalls awarded to only one person in the second level of that new building at the public market and it's clearly a violation of our code. Also, in section seventeen of the market code clearly requires public bidding for each of the stall, room, booth, or spaces in the public market. I just do not know if there was indeed a public bidding for this ah matter, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, I am citing this particular provision to make sure that procedures in the awarding of stalls in the said new perimeter building are strictly followed. Given the few findings, this representation being the vice-chairman of the Committee on Market recommends therefore that this matter be referred immediately to the Sanggunyang Bayan Committee on Market being chaired by Honorable Joel Ebel for proper action, for review, and perhaps for recommendation ah in the near future, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair, that would be all, good morning, everyone.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Akulosa, and this matter be referred to Committee on Market. Again, I would like to avail a privilege hour?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Honorable Burner, your honor recognize?
Ah, thank you, Mr. Chair, so good morning to each and everyone, so um, there is a concern regarding the municipal scholarship program, ah ordinance number zero nine dash four three two dash two zero one six two thousand sixteen, particularly um, section six G, um there are concerns ah from the students regarding the required final grade, so I will be ah passing an amendatory ordinance ah for this, ah regarding this ah during ah, on the next regular session. And regarding the concern of Honorable Alibutan ah sa schools that are um included sa ano, it, it is stated here, ah again, section six H, the grantee shall enroll as a regular student in any college or university in the municipality of Ipil, so maybe I will um add this ah amendment nalang also on the next regular session ah with ah corresponding MOA.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Burner, anyone who would like to avail privilege hour?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Honorable Ebel, your honor recognize?
Indog lang ko.
Okay, good morning, Mr. Presiding Sir, to the Honorable ah, ah floor leader, our staff, to each and everyone, good morning. Ah first, Mr. Chairman, I would like to extend on behalf of the ah Ipil Central Market Association, our deepest thanks to the Honorable Mayor who at last um made an action to resolve the sliding ah incidents in the public market, at least now we can now, we can now see that ah almost all of the the ah floor intersection in the fresh fish section is na being placed with ah rubber, rubber mat, okay, so thank you very much for that. Second, this representation, Mr. Chair, would like to suggest in this August body to consider i-caucus before the start of our session so that at least we could discuss matters that has something to do with the, 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 the order of business. Kanang diri na unta ata dini magdiscasa iu kanang ah what is this, with different views, at least, pwede unta, we we shall have a common direction in our session. I understand that we have also our MRP before the start of the session. So, ato na lang siguro nagi-adjust o unsang, unsang korasa. At least nga, naatay, himo on nga caucus. Because I experienced last first regular session of ours, I do not know if the other members of the, the, the Sangguneang, especially our, our ex-official members, but for me, we were not properly informed about our, our arrangement in the assigning of different committees. You know, this assignment of committees is very important. What is this? Uh, undertakings, because this will um, be the basis of our, our, our work for the, the next three years. Sa atong serbisyo sa lonsod sa Epele. At the end of it, I am thankful to you, especially to the Honorable John Alcariza, who, who gave this presentation as the chairman of the Committee on Market. Kana mo'y taas-taas na di ko ayong ng panahon, nagipangayo sa Market Vendors Association, na dun ay insakong representation sa market. So, he would like to, I would like to ask that a caucus be, be considered before the start of the session. May I ask the Committee on Rules if that is also a need to be, to be part of our IRP? Kinahanglam magyun na'to na si Albutang sa atong IRP? Or it's a, 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 just an arrangement with us? Another thing, Mr. Chair, is that I would like to inform this August body what we, what transpired during our meeting yesterday. That's why I said that the, the two hectares donated lot by the RVSM. If we are going to consider the original subdivision plan of the Luis Ruiz Senior, that was actually four point seven hectares. This document I am showing to you now is a twenty years old document of mine, since I was still member of the Sangguneang Bayan in two thousand four. And based on this sub, approved subdivision plan, ang kanang open space diya sa atong public market paspart, uh, four point seven hectares. And when the time comes, no ang RVSM magabot sa panahon sometimes in two, nineteen ninety-two, the RVSM executed the deal of conditional donation in favor sa atong local government unit in an area of twenty thousand square meters. That's two, two hectares. So ang remaining uh, two point seven hectares ano, nibalik dito sa RVSM. That's why I ask the this August body and even the Honorable Mayor, once I, once I direction sa ato ang gobyerno karang, are we trying to reclaim that area and consider that as anang posibleng himoan na'to kubagong mercado sa atong lonsod sa Epele? Kera unta mo'y ato ang, and may I suggest that this will be prioritized again? We will discuss this with the Committee on Market and perhaps together with the Committee on Land News. Para makahimo tao, posibleng action, o unsapoy mas mayong nga mahimo na'tong offer, nga atong ma, ma, mahatag dito sa RVSM. Okay? So, that's all, Mr. Chair. I hope that, um, this August body, as I said, let's talk on first pwedeng na na ay caucus na himo on before the start of the session. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Honorable Abel, and that matter will be referred in Committee on Land News and Market. Anyone who would like to avail the privilege, Chair? I think no one. Can I, Mr. Floor?
Okay.
Can I have a privilege?
Can we have a five-minute recess, Mr. Chair, for personal kuwan?
Five minutes recess.
Cafe CR?
Um, back to order. Floor leader, I would like to avail the privilege, please. I would like to relinquish the chair to Honorable Ma Hasim.
Okay, so we request Honorable Hasim.
Hello, hello. Hello. Call order. Hello, hello. Good morning to each and everyone. Good morning, Floor Leader. Uh, Madam Hasim, uh, Madam Secretary, Members, this is August body. Um, unos tanan, ah, kanilang gamay na kayong unserd about sa live coverage kuwan na'to, no? Sa, uh, regular session broadcast. Um, nakapanganan mo ko diri, is encouraged, no? So, I would like to amend this, napaparama, transparent po ta perminte sa tuwa mga katawan, okay? They deserve it, kasi sila may kapasweldo sa tuwa, no? So, I would like to amend na, ang nakabuntang diri sa section one dash fifty-seven is live coverage of the regular session of our broadcast live is allowed in encouraged. No, I amend na na'ko ni na it should be, not encouraged. So again, dagan salamat o mayangbuntang sa inyong tanan.
So, back to the Presiding Officer.
Anyone who would like to avail the privilege, Chair? No one? Um, Floor Leader, let's proceed to, um, proceed to approval of the reading of the...
Yes, uh, anyone who would want to pass a motion approving the minutes of our previous session?
I move, Mr. Chairman?
Kilang dispense.
I move, Mr. Chairman, for a resolution approving the minutes of the previous session.
Dispense, dispense.
Mr. Chair?
Approval, dispense.
I move to dispense the reading of the minutes from the previous session.
Okay. There's a motion passed by Honorable Abel. Um, seconded by Honorable Palalon. Any seconded at motion? Seconded by Honorable Catalunya. Any discussion? Amendments? Objection? There being that, motion approved? Madam Secretary, um, reference of business for today.
Hello. Okay, for the reference of business, calendar first. Reference of business. Okay, for the proposed resolutions, on first reading, we have four. We have, the first one is draft resolution number zero one, sponsored by Honorable Alberto Alcariza Junior. A resolution requesting Honorable Dr. Amadi Hofer Hasim, Second District Representative of Zamboanga Si Bugai, to file in Congress the bill creating the Municipality of Epele as a city.
So what's the pleasure of the proponent?
Yes, Honorable Chair. Uh, I formulated- I formulated this resolution, this draft resolution despite that the Honorable Congressman Doc Marley Hofer Hazim has already filed under House Bill Number 173 in the House of Representatives the bill for the creation of the City of Epeel. However, as agreed upon by this representation and together with the other members of this August Buddy and the office of the Congressman Doc Marley Hofer Hazim, that we need to also formulate our own resolution at their store office so that this resolution will then be incorporated in her, what we call this bill as she is filing the bill for the City of Epeel. So with that, Mr. Chair, I think this is considered as urgent. I move for the urgency of this matter, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion for the urgency of this matter? Any seconded motion?
Seconded.
Seconded by Honorable Ebel, any discussion? Amendments, objection, there being none, motion approved.
Therefore, I'd like to move for a resolution requesting Honorable Dr. Marley Hofer Hazim, our Second District Representative Sambuanga Sibugay to file in Congress the bill creating the municipality of Epeel a city.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Alcoriza, any seconded motion?
Unanimous decision.
Unanimous, so... Seconded, discussion, amendments, objection, there being none, motion approved.
Item B, we have here draft resolution number 02 against sponsored by Honorable Alberto Alcoriza Jr. A resolution requesting Honorable Dr. Marley Hofer Hazim, Second District Representative of Sambuanga Sibugay to allocate funds for the establishment of a solar street lighting system in the municipality of Epeel as part of the municipal peace and order priority program.
So what's the pleasure of the proponent?
Yes, Mr. Chair, again, this is very important, Mr. Chairman. Considering that the Congresswoman herself do made a promise to the municipality of Epeel that she will improve the solar street lighting system in the municipality of Epeel purposely to improve also our peace and order even during nighttime. So I guess in our conversation, in our meeting with the Honorable Congresswoman of this Second District, she also agreed and obliged LGU Epeel to pass a resolution requesting her office for this matter. So with this, Mr. Chair, I move for the urgency of this matter, Mr. Chair, so that this will immediately arrive into the office of our Congressman.
There's a motion passed by urgency of this matter by Honorable Alcoriza, any seconded motion? Seconded by Honorable Mazin, any seconded, any discussion? Amendments, objection, there being none, motion approved.
Item C.
Therefore, Mr. Chair, I move for a resolution requesting Honorable Dr. Marley Hofer Hazim, our Second District Representative Sambuanga Sibugay to allocate funds for the establishments of the solar street lighting system in the municipality of Epeel.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Alcoriza, any seconded motion? Seconded by Honorable Hazim, any seconded, any discussion? Amendments, objection, there being none, motion approved.
Okay, item C, we have here draft resolution number 03 against sponsored by Honorable Alberto Alcoriza Jr. A resolution requesting Honorable Dr. Marley Hofer Hazim to allocate funds for the construction of multi-purpose building in Barangaydon Andres this municipality.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the proponent?
Yes, Mr. Chair, again, this is part of the bigger plans of the District Representative Honorable Doc Marley Hofer Hazim in collaboration with the provincial governor, Honorable Dulce Anne K. Hofer for the development of our Epeel public market. But of course, this is going to be a multi-purpose building considering that this will cater a lot of activities inside that perimeter, in that area of Barangaydon Andres and we have been discussing this to improve our... in fact, the plan is really to put up a new building, a new public market. So this is going to be in line with the... during the privilege speech of Honorable Joey Ebel, this is in line with the plan of the Committee on Market, the Committee on Infrastructure to offer a proposal to the RVSM for additional lot donation so that we can extend our market, improve the market. So with this, Mr. Chair, I again move for the urgency of this matter, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Alcoriza, seconded by Honorable Ebel, any discussion? Amendments, objection, there being none, motion approved.
Mr. Chair, finally, I move for a resolution requesting Honorable Dr. Marley Hofer Hazim, our Second District Representative of Sambuanga Sibugay to allocate funds for the construction of a multi-purpose building at Barangaydon Andres this municipality.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Alcoriza, any seconded motion? Seconded by Honorable Hazim, any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Honorable Ebel?
May I ask the proponent of that resolution, Mr. Chairman? Is it... Is it still within the bounds of the law if the funds intended for the construction of the public market comes from the national government?
Yes, for as long as the title of the project is a multi-purpose and the purpose of the project is a multi-purpose, not only a public market. According to Doc Marley, Congresswoman Marley Hofer, actually, if we will focus on the market, it's not within the, you know, the list of projects, programs allowed for the Congressman like Doc Marley Hofer Hazim to provide for the municipality of Epeel. So if it's a multi-purpose, then it can be done.
How would the amount of that particular multi-purpose building proposal?
Actually, when it comes to the project cost, it will now depend on the DPWH. In fact, during our site visit, the DPWH was invited into that site visit at the public market. So there is no amount yet as of this time. All we have to do is just to request the Honorable Congresswoman and it's up for her in the future if after the complete planning to be submitted by the DPWH to her office.
Okay, so good.
Okay, no more discussion? Discussion?
But while waiting, Mr. Chair, for the meantime, may I ask and encourage the two committees, the Market Committee and the Committee on Land News to initiate the negotiation with the RVSM as to what we could... Ask for the... What is this? To resolve the area, Mr. Chairman, because if that multi-purpose building be established within the public market now, nito kulang kayo gamay ang atwang area, that's why there is a need for us to ask for another area where we could put up that multi-purpose building or market, Mr. Chair.
Okay, please take note of the Chairman of Land News and Market.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Honorable Catalunya, your honor, recognize.
Just maybe, not really a commentary, but maybe a suggestion to the proponent of this resolution that since we are requesting for a project from our good Congresswoman, I think she will also ask for the program of works for that specific project. Just like as we are endorsing programs from the barangay to be funded nationally, we put the program of works, the plan, and as well as the amount we are requesting. So maybe the proponent of the resolution can also consider this or to the submission to our good Congresswoman.
So what's the comment of the proponent?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Yes, Honorable Ebel, your honor, recognize.
I agree with that statement of the Honorable Catalunya, Mr. Chairman. As what we practice ever since in this Anggunean, we always attach the program of work and the estimated cost of that particular project so that the proponent, I mean, I mean the office where we are trying to request this project naai basis siguro o gunsei or pilai ma- allocate ng budget for that, especially budget comes from the national government. That's what I believe, Honorable Chair.
So what's the comment of the proponent?
Well, it's up to the decision of the members of this August Buddy. After all, it is the Congresswoman who requested us to... because this will be included in her... In her request to the DPWH to somehow, number one, make the program of work for the said proposed project and so that they will be able to identify the total project cost. But if the members of this August Buddy will really insist on submitting also at the same time the program of work, then we will wait for the DPWH to furnish us a copy of the program of work.
So are you willing to withdraw the motion?
Pending.
This is for two minutes.
Program of work, pero secondly, pwede namang gunita tuning iapprove and then the program of work will just follow later on. So pag naanang ang program of work, the DPWH will submit it to the office of the Congressman and the Congressman herself will do the allocation for the said project.
Any more discussion? Discussion, amendments, objection, there being none, motion approved.
Therefore, Mr. Chair, I move for the resolution requesting Honorable Doc Marley Hofer Hazim to allocate funds for the construction of multi-purpose building in Barangaydon Andres in this municipality.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Alcoriza.
And the program of work will follow.
Any seconded motion? Seconded by Honorable Hazim, any discussion? Amendments, objection, there being none, motion approved. Next, Madam Secretary.
Item D, we have here the draft resolution number 04 sponsored by Honorable Sheriff Mazin Hazim. A resolution officially inviting Senator Camille Villar to be our guest speaker during the 76th Araw ng Epeel celebration on July 26, 2025.
So what's the pleasure of the proponent?
Mr. Chair, I therefore move for the approval of this resolution inviting Senator Camille Villar to be our guest speaker during the 76th Araw ng Epeel celebration on July 26, 2025.
Second, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion passed by Dr. Hazim, seconded by Honorable Alcoriza, any discussion? Amendments, objection, there being none, motion approved.
Pwede na magpa-picture ni Senator Villar? Special ganto, VIP.
Next item, Madam Secretary.
Under other communications, item A, we have here a supplemental budget number one for CY 2025 barangay tumitom.
So what's the pleasure of the body?
Refer this to the Committee on Appropriation, Mr. Chair.
This matter will be referred on Committee on Appropriation.
Item B, Julie Endors from the mayor is a copy of the MWA to be entered into by and between LGU Epeel and the First Bali Bank for the automatic payroll deduction of salaries.
So what's the pleasure of the body, Mr. Floor?
Yes, again, we refer this to the Committee on Rules and Ordinances considering that this is a memorandum of agreement to be entered into by the LGU Epeel.
This matter will be referred to Committee on Rules.
Item C, we have here a communication from Mrs. Aragona requesting for an amendment of SB Resolution Number 8-427-2017 particularly to change the lot number located at the barangay Epeel Heights owned by LGU Epeel previously referred to the Committee on Land News but was not acted upon due to time constraints.
So what's the pleasure of the body, floor leader?
Mr. Chair, well, if this was already referred to the Committee on Land News but was not acted upon, I think it's also timely to refer this again to the Committee on Land News new by the new leadership of the committee.
Okay, this matter will be referred on Committee on Land News.
I give you a communication from Mr. Lindon Kudal, Business Development Executive, Hydro and Bioenergy Corporation requesting for a resolution, interposing objection to develop a three-water supply distribution program in Epeel.
So what's the pleasure of the body, floor leader?
Mr. Chair, we will refer this to the Committee on Environment considering kay water distribution eh, to the Committee on Infrastructure and perhaps to the Committee on Rules considering murad naagiha puntay MWA ani.
Okay, this matter will be referred on Committee on Environment joint committee by Committee on Rules and Infrastructure.
Item E, Julie Endors from the mayor is the request of Prosperity Gaming Corporation represented by the owner, Gerardo del Rosario for a resolution, interposing objection to operate in this municipality and understand they are here personally.
Okay.
Yes.
Can you suspend the rules? I think...
Yes, I move for the suspension of the rules to accommodate our visitor, Mr. Chair.
Who suspended? Sir, you may have the floor now, your honor, recognize.
Kindly introduce yourself, sir, to the August Buddy.
Good... Good morning, good morning, everyone, good morning, Mr. Presiding Officer and the members of the August Chamber. I am Mel Ranhola. I am the corporate secretary of Prosperity Gaming Corporation. Our main purpose or the primary purpose of being here is to apply for a business permit for our Prosperity Gaming Corporation. Bale, this is solely for... This is solely for the... To engage in the operation of small town lottery here in Sambuanga Sibugay. Yung business permit po namin ay dito po kami nakabase sa Epeel. Nakabase po kami dito po sa Epeel. Yung business address po namin ay sa... Porok Tambis, Barangaysanito, Municipality of Epeel. So yun lang po ang purpose namin para po... Pag nag open na po ang PCSO ng bidding... Pag nag open na po ang PCSO ng bidding for the province of Sambuanga Sibugay, ay nakapila na po kami and one of the requirements is the business permit dito po sa Epeel kasi dito po yung office namin. Yun lang po.
Okay, so what's the pleasure of the body, any comment?
Ah, Mr. Chair, magtatan ako, wala ba karoon ang nag-ooperate ang STL?
May nag-ooperate po pero... We heard na... Di ko alam kung magre-renew sila or whatever, basta kami po... Basta kami po, ang purpose namin is pipila po sa PCSO.
So, kaya akong nakita, ang STL, di ba local draw na siya?
Local and national draw.
Local and national draw? Can you, pwede mo tagaan sa inyo ang kuwan na, sa inihang dokumento, bago mo pa tagu-kuan? No objection? Pwede?
Okay, yes po.
Could you provide us the document kay? Akong, sa akong pagkahibaloh, STL is small-town lottery. So ang ilahang ginakita is the local draw na ang ato ang draw diha katungkol municipal building, atbang ato, Mr. Chair, na dito ang ilahang machine, dito sila magdraw. However, ang ato ang STL nagadawat ka puncilao kanang national, which illegal para sa ilahang. So ato ang tanawan, Mr. Chair, ang ilahang, sebena, policy, ang ilahang kuwan, charger.
Yes, Honorable Labor, I think ang file sila is na sa tong agenda, maka-kondesa, ng computer.
Okay, daghan kayo violation. Ako nakita, ultimo mga minu- dinan ng mga bata, mo taya, ginadawat. Di ba? Di ba? Bawal, sir?
Bawal na, bawal po.
Yes, okay.
Yan po ang violation ng mga, ng...
Ng mga operators.
Ng mga operators.
Pero ginatulurit sa mga kuwan kay because part naman siya.
Yeah.
Tayak man.
Anyway, for the record, sir, uh, this Prosperity Gaming Corporation is not an online...
It is not an online gaming po.
Yeah, for the record, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Catalunya, you know recognize.
To our visitor, I just want to ask, sir, aside sa, uh, small-town lottery, do you also have other ng mga, uh, I don't know, gaming that you have in mind? Uh, because pag release a business permit, it will not be limited to that. So you want to know if dun na pa bumay lain ng mga, uh, businesses? Or maybe, I don't know, gunsa'y, uh...
Wala po sa SEC application, na-approved na, na korporasyon namin. Wala pong secondary purpose. Primary purpose lang po, to engage in the operation of small-town lottery as authorized agent corporation, AAC, of the PCSO. Wala ng iba.
So just for the record also, to specify na if ever you will be given the business permit, STL, legal na STL?
Yes po, uh, it's there sa application namin. And of course, uh, God willing, pwede man po kami maging bridge niyo sa PCSO para sa community, uh, social responsibility po ro dito sa province of Sambuanga Cibugay, especially sa municipality of Epeel, distribution of, uh, ambulances, et cetera, et cetera.
That's nice.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Palon.
I just want to express my, uh, uh, my statement na I agree with Dr. Catalunya. It's because, uh, basig inig release na to sa resolution, we cannot withdraw it anymore. So if mahatag na to ang resolution, delay na na to ma-revoke. So just to make it clear, I hope na wala na tay laing, uh, a second business other than lottery.
Yes po, that's...
Okay, especially when it involves youth.
Yes po.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Honorable Alcoriza.
I think I'd like to, uh, somehow just make an addition. Actually, we can always revoke. Provided, makita na to on sa ilang violation, we can always revoke. Can I lang yun? Uh, just make sure that this gaming corporation will engage business legally.
Yes po.
Because, uh, I'd like to put this on record, Mr. Chairman, that if ever there will be some violations, I am very much willing to sponsor a revocation, uh, uh, resolution against the gaming corporation.
Yes po.
Okay. Any more question? Yes, Honorable Catalunya.
I think, Mr. Chair, uh, it's better if this issue be referred first to the committee for further deliberation together with the representative of the corporation.
Okay.
So with that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to propose that this, uh, uh, item be referred to the Committee on Rules.
Okay, this matter will be referred to Committee on Rules. Any more questions to our visitor?
Thank you to our visitor.
Sir, thank you sa pagvisita sa Mowa. Again. Next item, Madam Secretary.
Item F. We have here a copy of the petition letter from the residents of Borok Nangkatubod Bato, Bagong Silang, Jamilina, Betrans Village, against Mr. Eric Cerillas and Telma Cerillas regarding the obstruction of creek water flow causing flooding.
Okay, so what's the pleasure of the body, floor leader?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think we need to refer this to a committee or perhaps to some committees. I'd like to refer this to the Committee on Infrastructure to check the veracity of the report that they have obstructed a creek, no? The water flow of water. Uh, and then refer this also to the Committee on Land Use, the Committee on Environment.
Mr. Chair, uh, I, I suggest instead of the environment, the peace and order and Eldrim because I think sila ang atong concern regarding sa atong flooding
Peace and order.
than the environment.
This is for two minutes.
Thank you.
Backorder, discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. This is again in relation to item F of page 2. A copy of a petition letter from the residents of Puruk Nangka. And I'd like to bring you to item C, Mr. Chair. There's a same resolution from the barangay. Requesting the flooding issue at Puruk Bagungsi Langbitrans Village beside Erikserilis. So parehuran ni sila, actually. I'd like to propose that this will be referred to the committee on infrastructure, committee on land use, committee on the peace and order.
Okay, yes. This matter will refer on committee on land use?
Infra and peace and order.
Infra and peace and order. Next item, Madam Secretary.
Under resolutions and ordinances from barangays, we have barangay resolution number 2025 barangay Tiayon. A resolution endorsing to the SB through the committee on health. The complaint filed by Ostli Boy PIPA of Puruk Imavemko Tiayon against Robi GN 5 on the pigery issue for proper investigation and appropriate action.
So what's the pleasure of the body?
Mr. Chair, considering that this has something to do with environment and health, I think this will be referred to health and sanitation.
This refer with committee on health.
Item B, we have barangay resolution number 13, that's 2025 barangay Tabay. Resolution requesting the SB to allocate budgetary assistance for the conquering of the road from Puruk Young Dreamers to barangay Suklema of this municipality.
So what's the pleasure of the body?
Refer this to the committee on infrastructure.
This matter will be refer on committee on...
And appropriations.
Yes, Honorable Katalonya.
Since this request is about allocating budget, maybe we can refer it instead of the infra is to the committee on approval.
Okay, floor leader.
Okay, so committee on appropriations.
Okay, this matter will be refer on committee on appropriations.
Item C, we have barangay resolution number 102, that's 05 series of 2025 of the resolution to follow up a request to address the flooding issue. And this is in connection with item F.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the body? Floor leader? Floor leader?
Yes. I think this will be referred to the same committees that we referred to item F.
This matter will be refer on committee on appropriation. Floor leader? The chair would like to know who would like further from respective committee reports, please.
Sir, we still have...
We still have?
Atindi. Barangay revenue code of following barangays...
Please continue, Madam Secretary.
We have the barangay revenue code of tumitum, timalang, and bakalan.
Refer this to the committee on rules, Mr. Chair.
This matter will refer on committee on rules.
We are now on the committee report, sir.
Okay, floor leader? The chair would like to know who have committee reports, please.
Ako'y una?
Okay, go ahead, floor leader.
Mr. Chair, this is a committee report on the committee on trade and industry. Committee report number 014. Subject, Mr. Chair, an ordinance in joining all business establishments and local transportation in Epeel-Sambuanga-Sibugay to adopt QRPH digital payments in line with the Paleng QRPH plus program. Remarks and recommendations. The committee on rules, resolutions, and ordinances to which the matter was referred to pertaining the draft ordinance in joining all business establishments and local transportation in Epeel-Sambuanga-Sibugay to adopt QRPH digital payments in line with Paleng QRPH plus program. The committee conducted a committee hearing and discussed the said draft ordinance and made the following observations. Number one, the said draft ordinance is a carryover proposed ordinance from the 12 Sangguni Angbayan to the 30th Sangguni Angbayan of LGU Epeel that was pending for review with the previous composition of the committee on rules, resolutions, and ordinances. Number two observation. The three principal authors of this proposed ordinance are no longer members of the local legislative body of the municipality while one of the co-sponsor is no longer a member of the same council. Given the above observation, Mr. Chair, the committee to which the matter was referred to recommends that this proposed ordinance be referred again to a committee in the Sangguni Angbayan of Epeel, particularly the committee on trade and industry, currently chaired by this representation, and to volunteer to be the new author of the said proposal to be co-authored by the current members of the Legislative Council of Epeel. I therefore will move for the adoption of the committee report, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Alcoriza. Any second to that motion?
Second motion, Mr. Chair.
Seconded, Honorable Katalonya. Any discussion? Amendments? Objection? Rebeingan? Motion approved?
Next, committee report, Mr. Chair. Committee report number 013 from the committee on rules, resolutions, and ordinances. And there are two committees, actually, the committee on infrastructure. Subject, the memorandum of agreement or MOA among Security Bank Foundation Incorporated, Security Bank Corporation, Department of Education, Schools Division of Sambuanga-Sibugay, and the municipality of Epeel-Sambuanga-Sibugay for the implementation of the project entitled "Build the School, Build the Nation", a classroom project in the beneficiary school of Epeel-Sambuanga-Sibugay, which is the Sambuanga-Sibugay National High School located at barangay Pangi, Epeel-Sambuanga-Sibugay. Remarks and recommendations. The committee on rules, resolutions, and ordinances and the committee on infrastructure to which the matter was referred to pertaining the memorandum of agreement or MOA among Security Bank Foundation Incorporated, Security Bank Corporation, Department of Education, Schools Division of Sambuanga-Sibugay, and the municipality of Epeel for the implementation of the project entitled "Build the School, Build the Nation", a classroom project in which the beneficiary school is the Sambuanga-Sibugay National High School at barangay Pangi. This is for appropriate review and approval of the Sangguni Angbayan and authorizing the local chief executive of Epeel to enter into agreement with the aforementioned institutions. The committee conducted a meeting hearing, committee hearing rather, and discussed the terms and conditions of the MOA and the rights and responsibilities of the local government unit and partners and school as recipient. The committee finds it meritorious, Mr. Chair, considering it is legal and beneficial to the parties involved and to the community. The agreement shall have a duration of four years which shall commence on the date of signing of the MOA. The project cost is 1,990,000 pesos. The sponsoring committee vowed to finish the project for 180 calendar days as indicated in the program schedule. The committee therefore recommends the approval for the mayor to enter into and sign the MOA in behalf of the local government unit of Epeel. I therefore move for the adoption of the committee report, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Alcoriza. Any second to that motion? Seconded, Menrol Hasim. Any discussion? Amendments? Objection? Rebeingan? Motion approved?
With that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to pass a resolution approving the content of the memorandum of agreement.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Alcoriza. Any second to that motion? Seconded, Menrol Hasim. Any discussion? Amendments? Objection? Rebeingan? Motion approved?
Therefore, finally, Mr. Chair, I move for a resolution giving our local chief executive, Honorable Ramses Troy Oligario, authority to sign the said memorandum of agreement, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Alcoriza. Any second to that motion? Seconded, Menrol Hasim. Any discussion? Amendments? Objection? Rebeingan? Motion approved?
That's all, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Katalonya. You are now recognized.
Committee report number one. Subject, letter request of SB secretary Miss Estelita Igia for the reimbursement of travel and training to be charged to the current year appropriation in the amount of 8,680 pesos. Remarks and recommendation. The committee on appropriations and finance to which the abab subject matter was referred for review, be it noted that an inquiry endorsement has been referred to the office of the municipal budget officer regarding with the request to be charged to current appropriation, the reimbursement of travel and training in the amount of 8,680. As such, the municipal budget officer certified that the Sangguni secretary has an available appropriation for travel, local, and training expenses amounting to 20,000 pesos respectively. The committee therefore recommends for its approval. I move for the adoption of committee report number one, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Katalonya. Any second to that motion?
I second.
Seconded, Menrol Hasim. Any discussion? Amendments? Objection? Rebeingan? Motion approved?
Committee report number two and three with subjects annual budget for calendar year 2025 of barangay Suklema amounting to 3,497 pesos and barangay Logan 1,774,918.25 pesos. The committee on appropriation to which was referred the annual budget for calendar year 2025 of barangay Logan and Suklema of this municipality for review, evaluation, and approval. The said annual budget has been referred to the local finance committee through the budget, to the municipal budget officer for technical review and preliminary review. After review, it is hereby declared operative in its entirety effective upon its approval subject to the posting requirements under section 59 of RA 7160 and further subject to the conditions cited in the local finance committee review. In the implementation of this budget, the LGU must ascertain adherence to the fundamental principles enumerated in section 305 of the code. It is understood that the review action does not authorize any item of appropriation that is specifically prohibited by or inconsistent with provisions of law. The committee hereby recommends for its approval, provided that the compliance with the foregoing in the execution of the budget shall be the sole responsibility of the implementing barangay government using the standard guidelines or procedures in the budget execution phase prescribed under the Budget Civil Service laws, budgeting, accounting, and auditing rules and regulation. I move for the adoption of committee report number two and three, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Katalonya. Any second to that motion? Seconded, Menrol Hasim. Any discussion? Amendments? Objection? Rebeingan? Motion approved?
Committee report number four, five, six, seven, and eight, Mr. Chair. Subject, supplemental budget number one. Calendar year 2025 of barangay Epeel Heights amounting to 20,000 pesos. Barangay Maasin 1,091,180. Barangay Upper Pangi 106,428.36. Barangay Bakalan 112,785.32. And barangay Lumbia 78,322.16. Remarks and recommendation. Committee on appropriation to which was referred the supplemental budgets for school year, for calendar year 2025 of barangay Epeel Heights, Maasin, Pangi, Bakalan, and Lumbia. The said supplemental budget has been referred to the local finance committee through the municipal budget officer for technical review and preliminary review. After review, it is hereby declared operative in its entirety effective upon its approval subject to the posting requirements under section 59 of RA 7160 and further subject to the conditions cited in the local finance committee review. In the implementation of this budget, the LGU must ascertain adherence to the fundamental principles enumerated in section 305 of the code. It is understood that the review action does not authorize any item of appropriation that is specifically prohibited by or inconsistent with provisions of law. The committee hereby recommends for its approval, provided that the compliance with the foregoing in the execution of budget shall be the sole responsibility of the implementing barangay government using the standard guidelines or procedures in budget execution phase prescribed under the Budget Civil Service laws, budgeting, accounting, and auditing rules and regulation. I hereby move for the adoption of committee report number five, six, seven, and eight, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Katalonya. Any second to that motion? Seconded, Menrol Hasim. Any discussion? Amendments? Objection? Rebeingan? Motion approved?
Committee report number nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, Mr. Chair. Subject, SK annual budget for calendar year 2025 of barangay Pangi amounting to 750 and 19 pesos and 19 centavos. Barangay Suklema 349,77 pesos and 7 cents. Barangay Tiayon 796,744 and 60 cents. And barangay Logan 303,761 and 48 cents. The committee on appropriation to which was referred the SK annual budget for calendar year 2025 of barangay Pangi, Suklema, Tiayon, and Logan of this municipality for review, evaluation, and approval. The said SK budget has been referred to the local finance committee through the municipal budget officer for technical review and preliminary review. After review, it is hereby declared operative in its entirety effective upon its approval subject to the posting requirements under section 59 of RA 7160 and further subject to the conditions cited in the local finance committee review. In the implementation of its budget, the LGU must ascertain adherence to the fundamental principles enumerated in section 305 of the code. It is understood that the review action does not authorize any item or appropriation that is specifically prohibited by or inconsistent with provisions of law. The committee hereby recommends for its approval, provided that compliance with the foregoing in the execution of budget shall be the sole responsibility of the implementing barangay government using the standard... government using the standard guidelines or procedures in the budget execution phase prescribed under the Budget Civil Service laws, budgeting, accounting, and auditing rules and regulation. I hereby recommend for the adoption of committee number four, number nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Catalunya. Any second to that motion? Seconded by Honorable Hasim. Any discussion? Amendments? Objection? There being none. Motion approved. Please just for two minutes.
Resolution declaring operative in its entirety the annual budget for calendar year twenty twenty five of barangay Logan amounting to one million seven hundred seventy four thousand nine hundred eighteen and twenty five cents. Annual budget for barangay Suklema amounting to three million four hundred ninety pesos and seventy seven pesos. Supplemental budget number two for barangay Maasin amounting to one million ninety one thousand one hundred eighty pesos. Barangay Ipil Heights, twenty thousand pesos. Barangay Upper Pangy, one hundred six thousand four hundred twenty eight and thirty six cents. Barangay Bakalan, one hundred twelve thousand seven hundred eighty five pesos and thirty two centavos and barangay Lumbya, seventy eight thousand three hundred twenty two pesos and sixteen centavos and for SK annual budget of barangay Pangy amounting to seven hundred fifty thousand nineteen pesos and ninety centavos. Barangay Suklema, three hundred forty nine thousand seventy seven pesos and seven cents. Barangay Tiayon, seven hundred ninety six thousand seven hundred forty four pesos and sixty cents and barangay Logan, three hundred three thousand seven hundred sixty one pesos and forty eight cents.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Catalunya. Any second to that motion?
I second, Mr. Chair.
Seconded by Honorable Palalon. Any discussion? Amendments? Objection? There being none. Motion approved. Any more? Committee reports.
Resolution?
Please just for two minutes.
Ay, okay, sorry. Mr. Chair, I also move for a resolution approving and authorizing the charging of the prior year reimbursement travel amounting to eight thousand six hundred eighty pesos incurred by our SB secretary Miss Estelita Iggya during her travel and training last year.
Okay, there's a motion passed by Honorable Catalunya. Any second to that motion? Seconded by Honorable Palalon. Any discussion? Amendments? Objection? There being none. Motion approved. Okay. Any more committee reports? There being none. Floor leader, let's proceed to other matters. Can anyone suspend the rules to accommodate other matters, please?
Okay, so there's a request from the presiding officer to pass a to have a motion to suspend the rules because we are now on the other matters.
To suspend it. Other matters? Yes, Honorable Palalon. You're not recognized.
For the other matters, Mr. Chair, I have here the previously referred barangay ordinances of from the committee on rules and the committee wasn't able to render a committee report because it was still under review at the municipal treasury office and due to time constraint. So therefore, Mr. Chair, I move that these barangay ordinances specifically barangay revenue code of barangays Don Andres, Bankerohan and Maasin, the barangay ordinance, the revised barangay revenue code of barangay Tiayon and the barangay revenue code of barangay Magdaup, barangay ordinance of barangay Don Andres titled An Ordinance Establishing Product New Jerusalem B in barangay Don Andres Municipality of Ipil, Province of Sambuanga Cibugay and for other purposes. And lastly, the ordinance number three series of twenty twenty four of barangay Don Andres titled An Ordinance Instituting Biennial Elections for Borough Councils Mandating Quarterly Meetings and Submission of Documents and Establishing a Quarterly Assembly. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Okay. There's a motion passed by Honorable Palalon. Any second to that motion? Seconded by Honorable Apit. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, floor leader.
Clarification. Honorable Trexy, are you a member of the committee?
On rules?
Rules?
Yes.
Secondly, when that three items, the three items what? Were referred to the committee?
Seven.
The seven items?
Seven.
When the seven items were referred to the committee on rules, the chairman at the time was?
Honorable Turalba.
The former Sangguning Bayan member, Turalba.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I'm just for technicalities. The report, if it's still being signed by the by the previous committee chair of the previous Sangguning Bayan, the former Sangguning Bayan member, Katit Turalba, I doubt if that report will still hold water.
Mr. Chair, this is not a report. I'm transmitting it to the new chairman.
Ah, okay.
Yes.
Okay, okay, okay. Sige. If that is the case, then...
I am moving to refer this to the new chairman of the committee on rules.
Sige, sige, sige. Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any more discussion? Amendments? Objection? There being none. Motion approved. Any more other matters?
That would be all, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Palalon. Please just for two minutes. You're not recognized. Namumot si nasay concerns si Honorable Oligario.
With regards to my committee barangay, I strongly nominate as vice chairman Honorable Eric Alibodan. Since he's a former barangay captain is a former reason ako sa akon terminal ako kabalok ako sa komuhuman may na nga pag step down ako automatic na si Honorable Alibodan ang mahimbang chairman. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Members. Honorable Oligario.
One's a member, si Honorable Palalon, and the other one is Honorable Apit. That's all.
Last one. Last one.
Last one. Three members ba? Honorable Dampalan.
Okay. Please take note of that, Madam Secretary. Thank you, Honorable Oligario. Any more other matters?
Sir Chair.
Yes, Honorable Catalunya.
Going back to the hearing the prior privileged speeches and going back to the issue or not the issue, the desired amendments on our IRP, may I then move that revisions or amendments on the IRP be implemented particularly on section one fifty seven regarding the live coverage of our regular session that it should be implemented. And then on section one fifty eight E, that the presiding officer shall instead of using the word may, declare the fifteen minute recess prior to declaring non-corrom.
Okay. There's a motion passed by Honorable Catalunya. Any second to that motion? Seconded by Honorable Hasim. Any discussion? Amendments? Objection? There being none. Motion approved. Back to amendment ones.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
As I have been mentioning, Mr. Chairman, that this representation would like to amend in the internal rules of procedure particularly rule nine, section one, that's forty six. Before the start of the session, Mr. Chairman, that there will be a one-hour caucus of the members of this Sangguning Bayan, Mr. Chair.
Okay. There's a motion passed by Honorable Ibo. Any second to that motion?
Seconded by Honorable.
Seconded by Honorable Apit. Any discussion? Amendments? Objection? There being none. Motion approved. Okay, back to the amendment ones. Any more other matters? Any more other matters?
So, Mr. Chair, may I ask? So, we will start our our caucus next regular session. It will be on Wednesday at eight o'clock in the morning. Atulay budget ng oras. Budget na lang dayon, MRP.
Sige lang, once a week na po'tong regular session po't. So, delay na kayo na. Anyway, namo po'y agenda na ginasens atuha every so dagana tag mga idea na every Tuesday.
The day before.
Yes, Honorable Apit? Eight to nine? Please just for two minutes.
Motion adjourned, Mr. Chair.
Okay, there's a motion passed by Honorable Alcoriza. Any second to that motion? Seconded by Honorable Hasim. Any discussion? Amendments? Objection? There being none. The session is hereby adjourned.